Hello, everyone. Today is Tuesday, March 9th. The time is 5:30 and we are here for the City of Capel's regular city council meeting. There is a quorum present, so I'm going to call the meeting to order and we will be going into executive session. Thank you. So, item A is discussion regarding agenda items. Does anybody want to talk about any specific agenda items prior to the meeting? Hearing none, seeing none. Okay, so I'm going to flip the Magnolia item seat first. So, we have John Elias with the presentation and then we might, depending on how long this goes, we might have to do the second one after the meeting. Just, just in FYI, so your planning purposes. So, hello, Mr. Elias. How are you doing?
Great, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is John Elias. I'm the Park Projects Manager with the City of Capel and I'm here tonight to lead a follow-up discussion regarding the two trail alignment options for the Magnolia Park Trail. I'll start with a brief history of the project. I'll then review the two trail alignment options and then I'll answer any questions Council would have at that point. Direction is needed regarding which trail alignment to move forward with for the design of the Magnolia Park Trail. Next slide, please. This is, this slide is the location map of Magnolia Park. Most of us have seen this before, but I want to make sure everybody is aware of exactly where we're talking about. Magnolia Park is west of Denton Tap and south of 121. There are two lakes in the Magnolia Park subdivision and we are talking about the westernmost lake and the red dot marks the spot that we are talking about. Next slide, please. So, this is just some general information on the project. In January of 2019, City Council awarded the design of the elevated trail sections project, which included Magnolia Park. In July of 2019, Half &amp; Associates presented the city with the preliminary finding report that provided detailed trail and boardwalk alignments. At this point, we were talking about one continuous elevated boardwalk all the way across the southern side of the, the lake at Magnolia Park. When we got this report back, the preliminary estimates for that boardwalk were going to be in excess of $2 million. It was at that point that staff asked Half &amp; Associates to prepare an alternate route so that we had, would have options for Council to consider based on the, the cost estimates of the first one. In November of 2019, we received that preliminary report, the updated one, and we shared that with Park Board. This report did include the alignment B, which is the north shoreline alignment. In December of 2019, following that Park Board meeting, we, the city held a public input meeting for the Magnolia Park HOA to review the two trail alignment options and get comments back. And then in January of 2020, the project was put on hold while the city evaluated the impact of the proposed sales tax rule that was set to take place. At the start of 2021, City Manager and our Finance Department determined that there would be sufficient funding in CRDC to fund either alignment option for the Magnolia Park Trail. The City Manager asked me to come back to Council and give them an update on the project, where we were at, review the two alignments and, and, and basically make it known that we are ready to, to bring, bring this project off hold and move forward with it. We had that meeting in, on January 26th. It was a work session discussion and, and we went through both options in detail. At the end of that meeting, my go-dos were to go back to Park Board. We wanted a recommendation from Park Board to bring back to Council, so we wanted to go back to Park Board, review the two options, and we also wanted to invite the community for public input again as well. So, on February 1st of 2021, we held that Park Board meeting. Again, the meeting was to review the two alignment options, listen to public input from the Magnolia Park HOA and, and with the goal of Park Board developing a recommendation for City Council that I could share with you tonight. That meeting, a few details on that meeting. We had 36 members from the Magnolia Park HOA sign up to participate in that meeting in the Citizens Forum. At the start of that meeting, discussions between those citizens and our Park Board Chair, it was determined that the HOA would have five designated speakers and the rest of the people that had signed up would allot their two minutes to those five designated speakers. And so, that's how we proceeded through the meeting. They had five speakers. Each speak, speaker had, you know, I don't want to say unlimited time, but as much time as they wanted. Four of the five or three of the five, I believe, had PowerPoints they shared with, with the Park Board. And so, at the end of that meeting, Park Board did discuss all of the information and they did vote on a recommendation. That recommendation was for moving forward with design alternative B, which is the north side of the lake. Along with that recommendation, they asked that staff continue to work with the residents that will be impacted by this project to try to come to some resolution that both parties could be happy with it. Next slide, please. So, this is alternative design A. Again, the original boardwalk that we got from the first report from Half &amp; Associates, we were planning on doing an elevated structure all the way across here. We revised this alignment. We, we reduced the amount of elevated structure and we did leave half of it at grade. The preliminary estimate for this design is $984,000. Next slide, please. This is design alternative B. This is approximately 1,500 linear feet at grade. It incorporates a short retaining wall and screen shrubs between the residences and the trail. The trail alignment does extend beyond park property and it would require an easement from the East Lake HOA to construct the section that runs north and south. It's on the left-hand side of your screen here. East Lake has indicated that they are, are more than willing to give us that easement should we, should Council decide to go with design alternative B. The preliminary estimate from Half on this alignment was $370,902. I will end the presentation with Park Board voted to recommend moving forward with design alternative B. City staff agrees with that recommendation. Again, they asked that staff continue to work with the residents impacted with the trail behind their house and, and staff is, is willing to do that as well. With that, I will be happy to answer any questions Council would have.
Thank you very much. Any additional thoughts from Council?
Oh, we're good.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Elias, thank you so much for all the, for that you put forth in this trail presentation. My understanding is that the HOA, they were wanting us to go ahead and kind of postpone and hold off on moving forward this matter? And it looks like they've invested a lot of time and even money with that as well. Is there, I mean, what would be the downside of kind of giving them additional time to hear what their additional concerns are?
I, I don't know that there's a downside to delaying it. They did bring that up when they came forward, that they would like to delay the decision so that they can be involved with the design. I don't have concerns with that. We would involve them with the design. That's what we're trying to do. If we can get a direction on which side to go with, we would then work with the HOA on the design. I, I don't have an answer on, on if they spent money or what they've got into it on their end. I will say that we, we've been talking about this project with them and with Council and with the Park Board for, you know, several years now. And so, most of what they have been bringing forward, they've brought forward before and Council and Park Board have, have heard most of that. And we discussed most of that in the last meeting. So, to answer your question, I don't see a downside to waiting. I don't know that there's going to be additional information come forward. I, I think everybody, the HOA and hopefully Council and certainly Park Board understands, you know, the risk involved in going with the south side or what, what is involved in the south side and then obviously on the north side, we're coming closer to the residences. We really don't have a whole lot of options, you know? We got the north side and the south side. But, I, again, if, if Council would like for us to wait, I have no problem with that.
It's just that they've invested time and money into this matter and I just think that it'd be a right thing to do, at least hear them out. I guess the rest of it, if they had some more, you know, for us to hear about it. So, that's just, that's just my thought on that. Thank you.
Gary?
Thank you, Mayor. My understanding from the information we were sent today is that they were hiring the HOA, that is, or some of the residents, hiring a, a second engineer to evaluate this. You know, I'm, I'm fine with getting, giving them some more time to discuss this and bring issues to us. I'm a little concerned about them hiring an engineer and preparing a second report. I mean, I've managed engineering work for 35 years and people tend to think engineers like math, 10 plus 10 is always going to be 20, but depending on factor of safety and each engineer's own standards, the reports could be quite different. And so, if we get two engineering reports in, they're going to be put in front of Council and it's going to be our job then to decide which engineer is right. And I don't think we necessarily want to be in that position when we've hired Half, which is I think one of the, the best engineers in town for this type of work. What I would suggest, though, is we give them some time. If their engineer, prior to finalizing a report, wants to meet with Half, there's always good ideas out there, no matter how good of an engineer you are. Let those two engineering firms meet and discuss and let their engineer provide whatever ideas they have to Half and maybe there's some, some value or something that can be created there. But I, I just don't see going to the point of them finalizing a report, setting it down in front of us and, and looking to us to decide which engineer is right.
Brianna?
I, I think I'm aligned with, with all of that and so I won't necessarily repeat it, other than I don't think there's any harm in waiting, making sure that we've kind of heard and agree. Mr. Elias, first of all, thank you for all the information and yes, we've been talking about this for years and that's kind of what I've, I've relayed to those that have reached out. And I know that we've explored all different types of solutions, but I guess you never know. I know that they've hired somebody and we just want to make sure that we have taken into consideration any and all options and everybody hopefully will be comfortable with whatever we decide to move forward with. So, if at all possible, but I'll have to say, I don't, I'm, I'm fine with waiting. A little bit.
A little bit. The fine mark?
Yeah, you know, I'm going to have to agree with Gary on this. You know, I believe that we ought to allow the engineer that they've retained, who's done some preliminary work, to sit down with, with Half and have a discussion regarding his concerns, things he's perhaps seen out there. But as far as evaluating a full-blown engineering report from, from, from him, you know, we've hired Half &amp; Associates. We went through the whole RFQ process and I, I think that we should rely upon them, but by no means do we want to just stick our head in the sand and not potentially get some other insight into their concerns. You know, I've spoken with some people and they're concerned that the lake is not, bank is not stable and that it's going to, you know, potentially have some erosion there that would cause it to merge with the creek. And if that's a, a concern, we definitely, I think we want to address it with Half &amp; Associates and, you know, potentially while you've got a contractor out there mobilized working on the trail, you know, perhaps they could do some reinforcement if it is indeed needed. You know, I have learned that there's opinions in engineering, as Gary has stated. You know, there are assumptions that are made, there are what are considered best practices. So, you're going to have differing opinions. Although I don't think I would want to put a city asset like a very expensive trail, you know, up against an area where it's going to be continually inundated with, with floodwaters that are rising and receding. And I think it should be on the north side of the, the, the lake regardless, just so it's not exposed to that constant pressure of floodwaters. But, I mean, I see no reason why the engineer couldn't get together with Half in the coming week and give his input and then we can move forward at the next council meeting, you know, with perhaps making a, a final decision. Thanks.
Wes, then, Bijou?
Thank you, Mayor. Karen, like Gary, I've been doing engineering reports for way too many years and you can give the same set of design requirements to two individuals and you're going to absolutely come up with two different answers and neither one of them are wrong, they're just different. John, one of the things that you said was that City Staff was going to work with the, the HOA and ensure that both parties are, are happy with the outcome. I think we need to temper that a bit and realize that we may have dissenting opinions. I do strongly encourage the consultant that the HOA has hired to work with Half to understand their concerns and perhaps provide their perspective a little bit better than may have occurred in the past. But we need to be very clear that, you know, we're, this, that Half is our engineering firm that has been vetted and there's a certain amount of trust and responsibility that we place in that position. So, that is, you know, we're going to listen to their input and that is, you know, that is going to be the official consultant that we're going to listen to, although we will value the input from others. And I, I would encourage you and the rest of the City Staff that's been dealing with this to continue working with the HOAs to keep them completely informed and, and involved in the process. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Those of who are watching online, I just wanted to let you know, connecting trail is a top priority for the city. I have received a number of phone calls and we all received emails with more than 100 signatures from the East Lake and the West Haven community. We understand that your desire to connect the trails to the Magnolia Park so your children can ride, cycle, bicycles to the Denton Creek Elementary School as well as to the middle school. We had to put this project on hold due to sales tax shortfall from last year and we do have some money came over this time, so that's why we are entertaining this. And I want to thank all of you who called me and wrote an email to us. I also received call from Magnolia Park Board of Directors expressing some concerns with this project as well. I also want to thank you for your call. At this point, my take on this is table this issue today and listen and get in the staff and the associates and the engineer from that HOA as well as others, have a meeting and bring back to Council on the next, next council meeting. That's my, that's my take. Thank you.
I think we have, yes, sir?
Thank you, Mayor. Just, just to be clear, giving them additional time doesn't mean that I'm in favor of the alternative A design on the south side. It's not. I think it makes more sense in terms of getting the bigger, you know, more longer trail with the, with the dollar value that we're going to get. But at the same time, they've presented a, I guess, a proposal with approximately 722,000 dealing with the elevated, what is it, the bridge and the erosion issue? So, I'm kind of intrigued about finding, you know, learning about what it is that they saw that was actually less than what would have cost for the presentation that's been made by the, the Half Engineering, that it costs a lot more than, what is it, about 200-some thousands more than what the HOA engineer is presenting? So, I'm kind of, I kind of want to learn about that as well. So, it'd be interesting to see what the difference was and why there is about $250,000 difference in both proposals. So, thank you.
John, did you have something you wanted to say?
I, I think I can answer that. They basically took the entire elevated structure out of the south side. They're running it along the shoreline with just straight at-grade concrete. We've talked a lot about that and our concerns with running it at-grade along the edge of the shore because the shore moves and, and that's why we had talked about the section that we had at-grade. We were going to armor the shoreline. That is just to protect the trail. That's not to protect the bank or the lake or anything like that. That's not what we had in mind there. So, that is the difference. They're going at-grade, we are going at-grade as far as we felt comfortable and then we were going elevated structure from there. That's, that's basically the difference in the cost is they have no elevated structure. They're at-grade all the way.
Thank you for that explanation. That actually makes sense, so appreciate that. But going along the same line, I do agree with Councilmember Matthew that we could, you know, schedule this for another council meeting to give a little additional time for the HOA to see, at least hear them out, again, because they've invested some time and money into this as well.
So, John, has their engineer had an opportunity to talk with our engineers?
No. I did not know until the emails started coming out yesterday that they had reached out to another engineer. We have not had any correspondence with their engineer.
Is that, do you know what the name is?
I, I just looked it up. I'm not familiar with them and so I don't know anything about it. I don't, other than I saw what I think, what was emailed to you all, I, I saw the, he had an opinion of probable cause and he basically had some alignments. The alignments were basically the same as ours. Again, he was not going elevated structure on the south side. In the, in the north side, there's not a whole lot of options up there, you know, as far as the alignment. So, I have had no discussions with them. I don't know how they put their information together. To my knowledge, they do not have any survey information or any geotech reports or anything So to have the discussion and, and, you know, again, my inquiries to them, how did they come to their, you know, how were they able to pull this report together? Because, again, typically you have geotech report and some survey data and some, some information. To my knowledge, they don't have that. I don't know that for sure. So that would be my first question is how did they get to that? Again, I think, near as I can tell, all they're doing is at grade. They're saying it's on ground at grade, pretty much hugging the shoreline and that they can do that without removing trees and, and they can put some armoring in there with that project. And, and, you know, that, that wasn't the approach that we wanted to do. We were trying to stay away from the shoreline because the shorelines do move. There's, they absolutely move.
Is it, is it possible to get that done before the next meeting? That meeting, do you think? Or is it realistic?
I would assume that that would just be one meeting. I don't know that it would take a lot. So I will, you know, I, I don't know this engineer and so I will try to coordinate that and pull that off with the goal of getting in there at the next meeting.
Mark, did you have another comment? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I did. Just FYI, there was not a full report done. And it was based solely upon examining the site and the observations he made. I don't think he had access to any kind of geotech reports or anything like that. And so I, I think it would be important to have that discussion with half. And if someone can't squeeze in a Zoom call between now and next week, I would be just surprised.
I, I think we can get that scheduled, Mayor.
Or if people want to do a face-to-face, that doesn't matter to me. But I, I think that, you know, representatives from the city along with half and the other engineer definitely need to be present so everybody can hear each other and what they're saying. So when you report back, it's, there's no questions asked as to what was said.
Okay. Is everybody comfortable with that direction? I'm seeing every, every head nodding. So, John, do you feel like you have what you need to move forward?
I do. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Item B is discussion regarding increasing block rate structure for residential and irrigation meters and reduction in residential sewer volume cap. Lee, how are you doing today?
I'm fine. Thank you, Mayor.
We get to talk about water.
I know. I just want to thank you for the opportunity to discuss water and sewer with you once again so soon. But this evening I do have Dan Jackson. He is Vice President of Willdan Financial Services. He was involved in doing the rate study for the city, so he is with us this evening. Julianne, if we can go to the next slide. So this evening I would like to provide you with information requested at the January 30th council retreat concerning what would an increasing block rate structure look like for irrigation meters? Provide you with additional information concerning changes to the sewer volume cap. Provide a comparison of the current rate structure versus the proposed rate structure for residential and irrigation customers. And receive direction from council concerning both the irrigation block rate structure and the sewer volume cap idea. Next slide, please. So at the council retreat, the idea of an increasing block rate structure for residential customers was presented. And during that discussion, a request was made that staff also consider an increasing block rate structure for irrigation meters. And that request was passed along to Willdan. And this slide provides the proposed water rates for an increasing block rate structure for both residential and irrigation meters. The first section of the chart is labeled monthly minimum charge. And it shows that the base rate for residential customers is $21 and that is not changing. The next section labeled volume rate per thousand gallons provides the three blocks of usage for residential customers. The rates shown per thousand gallons are the same that were shown during the council retreat. I just also want to just point out again that 71.1% of residential customers fall into the first block, while 14.1 fall into the second block and then 14.2 fall into the third block. So again, 71.1%, 71.1% of residential customers would see a slight decrease in their water bill. However, 28.3 would see an increase if they don't change their water usage habits. Going back up to the top of the chart, the proposed irrigation block rate structure does have an increase in the monthly minimum charge for irrigation meters. Goes from $21 to $22.26 or $22.26. In the volume rate per thousand gallon section, you can see that the proposed increased block rate structure for irrigation does have two blocks. The first block would be for usage up to 25,000 gallons at a rate of $3.34. And then the second block would be for all usage over 25,000 gallons and that's at $4.78 per thousand. We do have 520 irrigation meters. 32 of those belong to residential customers and 488 belong to commercial customers. Included in the commercial customer count are HOAs. 70% of the irrigation meters use about 50,000 gallons per month or less. And 50% of irrigation meters use about 25,000 gallons per month or less. A comparison of the residential water rates versus the irrigation water rates for a 5/8 inch meter with 25,000 gallons of water usage provides the residential customer with a bill of $101.90 versus $105.76 for the customer with an irrigation meter. And again, this is for water only. There was, the customer with an irrigation meter would pay about $3.86 more than the residential customer with the same usage. The difference increases as the size of the meter increases and so irrigation meters range in size between 5/8 inch and 2 inches. Whereas the majority of residential meters are either 5/8 of an inch or 1 inch. Also using the use of two blocks for the irrigation meters is similar to the current conservation rate structure that's effective June 1st through October 31st. The first block of the current conservation rate is for usage up to 25,000 gallons, which is at a cost of $3.15 per thousand gallons. The rate on the next block is $3.94 and it covers all usage over the 25,000 gallons. So as I mentioned during my last presentation, the reason to implement an increasing block rate structure is to impact demand. The city pays a set amount for the right to demand 18.5 million gallons per day. That amount is currently $291,422 per million gallons or about 5.4 million annually. The thought is that by impacting usage today, we can have a positive impact on the city's future demand level. Also, as a reminder, both residential and commercial customers have access to the customer portal. And that's the tool that was rolled out when the city implemented or installed the advanced water meter system to manage their water usage. The customer portal provides customers the ability to view their usage and set up usage alerts. And utilizing the customer portal and establishing water alerts does provide customers with control over the water portion of their water bill. So for example, customers can see how much water their irrigation system is, is using and manage that use to prevent moving into the next usage block. And the last comment I'd like to make regarding this topic is that the overall impact of the proposed residential and irrigation rate structures is revenue neutral. So the increasing block rate structure is anticipated to generate the same amount of water revenue as the current rate structure. And so before we move on to the next topic, I just wanted to stop here and see if there are any questions or discussions around this portion of the, the presentation.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? Wes?
So, Kim, thank you very much. It's always good to see you get so excited over a topic like this. Just one simple question. How do you determine the difference between a residential or irrigation meter?
So, so the residential is, is what we refer to as a domestic meter. And so it's the meter that, like at my house, it feeds my irrigation and inside of my home. Where some people set up a separate irrigation meter. So they have two meters at their house. They have one just for their irrigation and they have one for the water that's used inside their home.
So is that something that you ask at the time of the application for a new tap?
That would be a question for engineering. I'm not sure how they decide that. I'm sorry. I'm not sure how they, how they go about getting the irrigation meter.
Kent, I'm so glad you're just hanging out. Do you have an answer to that question?
Is, yeah, Kent, is he on? Does he know?
Yes, he is.
I am on. And yes, that's basically when they come and purchase the meter, we know whether it's a domestic or, or irrigation meter. So, yeah, and, and it'll show on the plans. It'll have two taps. You'll have the one meter that connects into the domestic feed into the house and to the, for those domestic uses. It's pretty, it's fairly rare, I would say, for a residential to have two meters. But it's not, it's not unheard of.
Right. We have 32, 32 residents that have a separate irrigation meter.
All right. Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Okay, let's keep going.
Okay. Next slide, please, Julianne. So in addition to the change in the water rate structure, Willdan also included decreasing the residential sewer volume cap by 1,000 gallons each year until it's reduced to a 9,000 gallon cap. Since sewer cannot be metered, a threshold of 14,000 gallons was established as the amount of water flowing into the sewer system. However, a portion of that water usage could be for irrigation, which does not enter the sewer system. And so Willdan's analysis of residential customer usage determined that establishing a new threshold would be appropriate. So as shown in this chart, the rate study recommends reducing the cap incrementally over the next five years to 9,000 gallons in 2025. This slide also shows Willdan's rate study proposes reducing the volume cap from 13,000 gallons this year while keeping the monthly minimum volume rates unchanged. Can we go to the next slide, please? So why a phased-in approach to reducing the residential sewer cap rather than moving directly to a winter averaging method? And so the reason it was recommended that we phase it in, there are several reasons. And the first is that the city is in the middle of a new utility billing software implementation with a go-live date projected to be in December of this year or January of next year. The software company's implementation team has advised that we should not change our sewer method until after the city has moved to the new system. The current system does not use winter averaging and so the conversion and testing would be more complicated. It would require a change order, which in turn will increase the cost of the project. And it may also push out the go-live date past the December-January timeframe. Also, based on the software implementation timeline and the software company's recommendation, the first opportunity to implement a winter averaging, if that's the direction given by council, would be April of 2023. This would allow us to use the months of November 2022 through February or March of 2023 to determine the winter average for each customer. This also provides an opportunity for the city to notify customers in advance of the winter averaging time period so that customers can begin managing their use. Also, it's important to note that the Water and Sewer Fund's only revenue source is from rates charged for water and sewer services provided. So therefore, the revenue generated from the water and sewer rates must cover the cost to operate the system, maintain the system's infrastructure and cover the principal and interest payments on the outstanding bonds. Mr. Jackson has cautioned that the cities, cities should be very careful about making abrupt changes to a rate design as there may be unattended consequences since the same amount of revenue needs to be generated no matter what rate structure methodology is utilized. For example, if the city were to immediately go from billing based on a cap of 14,000 gallons per month to a winter average, the result is likely to be that the low-volume customers may see the biggest proportionate increase. And this is because it's possible that the number of sewer billing units would drastically decrease under winter averaging methodology so that the unit rate per thousand gallons and/or the base rate would need to increase to ensure the city recovers the same amount of revenue. So if the cost per thousand gallons goes up, then those residents who use only 2,000 or 3,000 gallons per month are likely to see an increase in the overall cost per billing unit, while high-volume water users could see a decrease in the overall cost per billing unit. So for the above reasons, staff is recommending gradually reducing the cap from 14,000 gallons to 9,000 gallons. It does result in a gradual and systematic reduction over time. So staff can continue to evaluate the impact of the change, the change on rates and what the change means to all customers to create an equitable cost sharing among all customer groups. Then when the cap reaches 9,000 gallons, the disruption from changing to a winter average would be minimal for all users, including low-volume users. The idea is to spend the next several years gradually adjusting the cap so that by the time it reaches 9,000 gallons, the city has had the option to convert to a winter average with minimal disruptions to all customers. And again, I'd like to share the financial impact of these changes, but before I do, are there any questions concerning this recommended, recommended approach?
Gary? Let me see the financials. Anybody else have a question? Okay, go ahead.
Okay, next slide, please. So this next slide shows the difference between the current rate structure and the proposed increasing block rate structure. So as you can see, someone using less than 15,000 gallons will see a small decrease. However, someone using 25,000 gallons will see about a $3 increase. One thing to note is that the amounts shown are the total for water and sewer portion of the utility bill only. These amounts do not include refuge or stormwater. In addition, the amount shown under the proposed does include a reduction in the wastewater cap of 1,000 gallons since that was, is the recommendation to move from the sewer volume cap of 14,000 gallons to 13,000 gallons of usage. Next slide, please. So this is, this slide just shows the difference between the current rate structure and the proposed increasing block rate structure for a 2-inch irrigation meter. The 2-inch irrigation meter using 25,000 gallons will increase about $8 using the proposed increasing block rate structure. The increase grows as the water usage increases, which is the objective of an increasing block rate structure. Those putting a higher demand on the system will pay more. Next slide, please. So in summary, staff is proposing implementing, the implementation of an increasing block rate structure for both residential and irrigation meter accounts. A phased-in approach to reducing the sewer volume cap and starting that phase in this year with 1,000 gallon reduction in the cap. Staff also recommends that these changes be implemented June 1st. The changes are revenue neutral for the Water Sewer Fund. And with that, I'm seeking council's direction concerning how we want to move forward with the increasing block rate structure and the phased-in approach to the reduction in the sewer volume cap. Next slide is questions.
Thank you again. Now, Gary.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Ms. Tien, for a good presentation as always. Two things. One, on the domestic water side, I like the idea of reducing rates for those individuals using less. I think that sends the right message and is appropriate. On the sewer side, I have to admit, after all these years of listening to presentations, if you would have stopped me as I'm walking around the trail at Andy Brown Park and asked me how we do that, I would have told you we did winter average because I thought that's how all cities did it. And so shame on me for not understanding that we And so shame on me for not understanding that we don't. I think the winter average is just the equitable way to do that. And I think we need to move to that as quickly as we can. I understand the need to wait till the software conversion has happened. But I'm not sure I fully understand the need to spread it out over five years. I think we can do a good job of anticipating what the changes are going to be and affecting rates appropriately. So I guess I would encourage staff to look for a way to do that more quickly because I think that gets us to a rate structure that's more equitable faster.
And so may I ask a question? Would the timeline that I provided that we implement the winter averaging in April of 2023, would that be soon enough? Or are we wanting something even sooner? I just feel like that would be the appropriate timeline for the conversion.
Yeah, I guess if that's the soonest we can do it based on the software conversion, then that's as soon as we can do it. I wouldn't, I wouldn't want us to do something that gets us into a challenge in getting bills out, getting accurate bills out. And I wouldn't want us to pay more for the software conversion to make that happen. But I would want us to do it as quickly as you're comfortable doing it.
Okay. And Mr. Jackson's on with us, so if you have any questions for him, he's also here. But I'm sure that he can help us tweak everything so that we can look at an implementation of 2023 with the winter averaging.
John, did you have a question?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. So I'm going to echo what Councilmember Roden has said. But also, it doesn't make sense to me why we are doing incrementally. And I get what you're saying, that it might impact the software changeover. But at the same time, we're going to have to do it at some point if we are going to change it to winter rate, correct, averaging?
Right, but we don't, we don't have the information in the current system. And so we would want to run parallel. And so since we would want to, when we convert, take the information that we have in our current system. We set up the new system. We will be running bills in the current system and the new system and making sure those bills come out the same. If we were to convert any sooner, we wouldn't be putting it into our new system. There's just no way to get that done unless we want to pay more for this implementation. And it could possibly postpone or push out the implementation. It's very important when we're doing bills that we have the ability to run parallel. We need to be able to double-check. Those bills have to be right. And I personally, I just, I can't recommend implementing this in the middle of a software conversion.
Well, and I appreciate you saying that we want to try to make it, you know, right or correct, right, to make it as best as possible. But and I'm sure you also saw the email from Mr. David Shaw, his explanation as to what he saw was as an issue with the charging of the sewer rates at the block rate when, in essence, a lot of us are not really using that amount of sewage rate. I mean, the water rate, yes, but sewage rate, we're not spending, we're not spending that much, especially during the summertime. So it made sense to me what he said about we need to go back to winter rates as soon as possible because a lot of people, our residents, are being charged for the amount that they're not really using for the sewage usage.
Yes, sir. If you don't mind, if I could make a couple of comments regarding that. There are different ways of calculating for sewer usage. No way is perfect. What the City of Capella has been doing for the last many years, setting a cap of 14,000 gallons, is very common around the United States. The reason is because nobody really knows how much sewage is going in to the system from any given, from any given account because there is no such thing as a residential sewage meter. So you use 14,000 gallons as an estimate. Yes, it is possible that some people are paying some sewer charges on sewage that isn't necessarily going in. Problem, though, is that the same thing could potentially happen under a winter average as well. The reason is that winter averaging is not perfect because it assumes that the amount of water or the amount of sewage that goes into the system is going to be the same all year long. Well, the problem is, is that you have to base that on your winter usage. And here in Texas, we have a very, we have a very temperate climate. So what that means is that it is very possible in the winter months that you're using water outdoors. It's not inconceivable that you water your lawn in January and February and March here in Texas. So for that reason, a winter average may not be a perfect calculation for every particular user. So, like I said, it's a matter of which system is the most accurate. No system is going to be totally accurate. Now, one other thing I'd like to talk about real briefly, and that is the conversion from the current system to the winter average approach. One of our recommendations was that you phase this in over a number of years. Because if you make an abrupt change from the system that you have right now to a winter average, you run the risk of disproportionately impacting some of your customers. Your very low-volume users are going to see fairly significant increases if you went overnight from your current system to the winter average. Whereas your large-volume users are going to see pretty substantial decreases. So we recommend that you phase it in over a number of years to minimize the disruption among all of your customers. In other words, the issue didn't occur overnight, so why try to fix it overnight? Why not phase it in over a number of years so that by the time your usage gets down to the 9,000 gallon cap, converting to a winter average is going to be very, very minimally disruptive at all? There is nothing that would stop you from doing the conversion instantly if you want. But what will happen is you're going to see much more disruption among your users. And of course, those people that see the largest increases are going to be your lowest-volume users. And it's very likely that that could cause some economic pain among all of them. So that's what you have to balance when you look at, when you look at these different alternatives, instantaneous or phased in.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson, for that explanation. But, I mean, you said no system is perfect, but going with the winter rate is actually closer than what we have today, isn't that true?
I think, I think most cities will conclude that winter averages are the most accurate. For example, up in, you know, winter averages are golden in a place like Green Bay, Wisconsin, because it's inconceivable that anybody's going to use water outdoors in the winter months in Green Bay, of course not. Here in Texas, though, it's not quite as ironclad because if we have a very, you know, temperate or warm winter, then it is common for people to use water outdoors in the wintertime. And that pushes up their winter average and will cause them to pay for sewage that doesn't necessarily go into the system. Like I said, none is perfect, but winter averages are, all things being considered, winter averages are generally considered to be the most accurate way of charging for sewage.
Yes, Mr. Jackson, but still, I mean, going with what you're talking about, still, even if we, if people actually watered even in November, let's just, you know, for say, it's still closer than charging the way we went right now. Wouldn't it be?
I think, yeah, I think, I think that we're all in agreement that we need to move to winter averaging. That's what I'm hearing. And I think what I'm also hearing is it's really, how quickly do we do that? And so again, I am comfortable with recommending that we implement it sooner than taking it all the way out to 2025. I'm not comfortable with trying to implement it during a software implementation.
So, and one of the things that, you know, you mentioned about taking the winter average from November to March. And you're right, November and March probably shouldn't be in the averaging because that's probably, a lot of times, we still do water. But if you take it from December, January, and February, you know, it'll still be closer than what we actually have. On top of that, we're going to evaluate this every year. So we'll still be getting closer to, closer than what we're doing right now in charging for the amount that a lot of people are not using for the sewer usage.
And I agree with you. I mean, we can look at what, which months make sense between November and March. Do we use December through February? I agree, we can, you know, those are options. Again, based on the timeline, I just, we would want to, since we're doing the implementation this year, we, for the software, we would want to look at next year. We would want to look at the winter months for 2022. So looking at, if you want, December through February would be December 2022 through February of 2023, and getting those averages, notifying people that we're doing that, and then implementing that approach.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Mark?
Yeah, I definitely think we need to phase this in slowly. You know, you think of an elderly couple who's on a fixed income. You know, they could get sticker shock very quickly if we move to make this change. And I would say at a minimum, go with Kimberly's recommendation just for billing purposes. But I think the five-year phase in is the way to go. Because more than likely, those people, you know, that are using the minimal amounts are, are going to see the biggest hike and that will be a significant impact to their monthly budget. So I think the slow phase in is the way to go.
Thank you. Bijou?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question for Kim. Kim, you said you want to run both systems parallel for how many months?
Well, we would want to do that two or three times. So it would be two or three months' worth of billing cycles that we would take that through.
So when are you planning to transition from the old system to the new system?
The implementation will, we will move to the new system in either December of this year or January of next year.
Oh, December of this year, okay.
Yes, sir.
But if you are trying to calculate the winter average, if you are implementing a new system in December, how will that work?
So that's why we would not want to calculate the winter average until 2022. Rather than December of this year, which of 2021, we would want to begin doing that in next year, in 2022.
So using the new software, when will you start billing the customer? What do you anticipate? What month in 2023?
Oh, no, we would, we would begin billing with the new software in December or January is when we would begin billing with the new software.
Oh, okay.
Okay, that's when we, when we go live and it's implemented. So the parallel is going to happen before December. We're going to be working to get that up so that we can start testing it before we actually go live with it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. We are right at 7:32. Are there any more questions for Kim and Dan? Thank you.
Can I, can I just clarify? So at the next council meeting, am I to bring forward the increasing block rate structure for residents and irrigation? And then also a decrease in the sewer averaging from 14,000 to 13,000 for right now?
Is everyone okay with that recommendation? You have nodding heads.
Okay, thank you so much. I really appreciate all of your time.
Thank you very much, we really do. And thank you, Dan, again, for joining us, we appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, so it's 9:32 and we adjourn from work session. Pardon me? Nine, oh, I was probably thinking about how long we're going to be here. It is seven, now it's 7:33. Sorry. So give, let's, seven minutes, five minutes. Audience, please give us just a few minutes and we will start the regular meeting. Thank you. One, two, three, are we all here? We are all here. So the time is 7:39 and let's move into regular session. Today, we have Councilmember John Jun to help us with the invocation. And then we will do the pledge of allegiance. So please stand and remain standing for the pledge.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, thank you so much for giving us this day, allowing us to be able to open our eyes, breathe, and be able to enjoy your creation with our loved ones. Father, we thank you for guiding us each day and we ask for your continued blessings and support, not only for those impacted and disrupted from their home by the weather, but also for those struggling because of COVID. Father, we are truly grateful and thankful to be able to come together and meet in person during this difficult time to tackle the matters before us. And as we prepare to discuss the agenda items, let us be reminded that although all of us are created in your image, it is through your doing that each of us have our own unique appearances as well as unique gifts to be able to think, analyze, and express in ways different from one another. But whatever the difference it may be, let us be further reminded that each of us are here because of your blessings to represent our fellow brothers and sisters in our community and ultimately be able to reflect that we are here to serve and represent in the interest and for the betterment of the community. We ask for your continued blessings and guidance through the meeting so that we are able to walk away afterwards knowing that we have served as your sons and daughters, sharing your words and wisdom. We ask and pray all of this in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic under God. Okay, thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is citizens' appearance. We have several people who are going to join us this evening. And as a reminder, persons wishing to speak in any matter on an agenda other than that of a public hearing must register through this, it's different because we're not, we're not in person, through the city secretary's office. Such persons may be heard at citizens' appearance a portion of the regular meeting or the special meeting. Each person, please state your name and address of residence. The presentations for individuals during citizens' appearance should be limited to two minutes each. The individual speakers' time may be extended for an additional two minutes with the approval of the majority of council. There will be a cumulative limit of 20 minutes allotted at any regular or special council meeting. Those persons signed up to speak will be, will be called on in the order that they have registered. No personal attacks by speakers shall be made against any member of council, the mayor, individual, or group, or corporation. And so with that, the first on our list is a presentation from Mark Meyer, the HOA president, Yvette Hightower, the HOA vice president, and Jeff Cornell, who is a civil engineer. So I guess, Mark, are you available?
Yes, I'm here. I'm supposed to go last and the first two slides we've decided not to use. Yvette, you want to go?
Remember to state your name and your address before you speak.
Thank you. Mayor, can you hear me? This is Yvette Hightower. I live at 137 Natches Trace in Capella.
Clearly.
Thank you. Julian, can you put on the slide that we discussed that shows the two options for the Magnolia Park Trail? That one. Thank you, Julian. I'm Yvette Hightower. I'm the vice president, Magnolia Park HOA. Thank you for giving us an opportunity to have our voice heard. In your work session tonight, the timing of the trail design in our engineers' review was questioned by many of you. So I'd like to give you a little history on this project from our perspective. The park's plan was always to have the trail on the south side of the lake, north shore of Denton Creek, which is where the two trail endpoints to be connected currently are. This is the area that is similar to most of the trail system through the natural green space of Capel. Many of our residents attended the park board meeting on November 4th, 2019, when we first learned of the north side trail option, which is being called Option B, which is a much longer option, but we were not allowed to speak at that time. We were then granted a work session meeting where we presented our concern with the proposed plans, the greatest of which is the lake erosion and potential levee breach on December 3rd, 2019. Not one of those issues has been addressed or even reviewed. At that time, we asked that a further impact analysis was done before presenting these options to you, the city council, and asked to be involved in that analysis and design process. I followed up with John Elias via email four times through 2020 and was told that the project was on hold. Our expectation was that there would be follow-up meetings once the project was deemed a priority again, where we would work together on a solution before presenting it to the city council. We found out at the January 26th city council meeting that in less than one week, the park board would vote on the proposed location and recommend to you for full design and bidding. At that February 1st meeting, we again asked the park board to postpone their vote until the complicating issues were reviewed, but we were denied. The board voted to pursue the new north option labeled as less expensive, even though when John Elias was questioned about the erosion and levee stability on the original intended path, he stated that was another department, Public Works. So he had no knowledge of that issue and no intent of coordinating with Public Works. It was made clear that the design and cost analysis of the trail did not include any of the erosion factors of the lake that they are encircling. In early February, we submitted a request for Public Works to review the levee erosion issue. Avery from Capel Public's Work, Works met me at the lake on March 4th, where he agreed that the land between the lake and Denton Creek needed to be reviewed by engineering and stated that he would bring it to his supervisor's attention. When I asked what the timing of that would be, he said at least three months. Therefore, in preparation for tonight's meeting, again with less than one week's notice from the park department, we contracted with a civil engineering firm to help us understand the challenges and the potential opportunity to avoid a major failure to the levee and lake system. Many of you asked how extensive his report could be without geotechnical information, but that was not our intent. We were looking for alternatives to the proposed design. I would like to introduce Jeff Cronell. He was a city engineer and he has a 13-engineer firm that he has owned for 35 years, focused on land and subdivision development and has floodplain certification. Jeff is a highly respected expert who provides expert witness work. Many of you may already know Jeff by reputation. What we've asked Cronell Engineering to assess here is exactly the type of work this firm does. But before Jeff addresses you, I want to point out that we feel passionate about providing a safe route to the schools for our adjacent neighborhoods of West Haven and Eastlake. Like many of those students, my children walked and biked to Denton Creek Elementary and North Middle School. So I truly understand the value of this trail. The original design is still a much shorter route and because it is more visible from the whole park, it is safer for children. This is the trail that I would have wanted my children, when they were young, to be walking on. Finally, I want to reiterate that Magnolia Park supports the trail. We want to work with the city, but we want the potential levee breach fixed. And we respectfully request that the city departments work together and with us to tackle both of these issues at one time in a fiscally responsible manner. On that note, Jeff Cronell, I yield the floor to you.
Thank you, Yvette, and Mayor and Council. Am I coming through?
Yes, you are. And please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you. My name is Jeff Cronell. Address is 2570 Justin Road, Highland Village, Texas. And yes, Yvette's right. I've been practicing engineering in the Dallas area for over 40 years and love what I do. I feel like we have a creative and dynamic engineering company and this is exactly what we do every day. We're currently working on a master plan community in Crum, Texas that will have over 4,000 feet of hike and bike trails, very, very similar to this. And so rural versionist area. So we were contacted by the HOA about 10 days ago to look at this option, to look at the trail north side of the pond versus south side of the pond, to do a high-level look at the potential cost estimates and the pros and cons of both, both locations. So what you see in front of you is the Option A, south side trail, approximately 130 feet long. Option two, shown in red, would be the north side, approximately 1,134 feet long. We also show, I think there is a connecting trail that goes into the neighboring subdivision, not really part of the scope of work. So what we did is we looked at the, the site. We met with the HOA board. We walked the site as well, looking at the potential for construction, the issues that were going to be addressed either on the north side or the south side. What are some of the pros? What are some of the cons? And from that development, we also prepared an opinion of probable cost. Now, as you can probably tell, we haven't been on this project long, so these are high-level looks. But from our initial view here, it looks like the cost to develop the, to construct the trail on the south side is very comparable to the cost on the north side. The length is much shorter. The construction will be more difficult, but not significantly. There is some woods and some growth along the south side trail that will need to be cleared and revegetated. However, this does create a very nice shady walking path, hopefully in the summer when it's nice and hot out there. So we feel like there's some pros and cons of that location. So what we see is the original trail extended this direction. That's where the trail currently stops, at both east and west ends. And so this would be a continuation of the original trail. We also know that there are erosion issues around this pond. We observe some erosion issues on the creek bank of Denton Creek. And so I think this may be an advantage to Public Works to possibly consider a trail on the south side that might also enhance some of this creek bank stability. There are ways to improve or to put in a wider trail or a trail with a vertical stem walled going below the concrete trail to provide erosion protection. There are ways to incorporate retaining walls and things of that nature to help minimize this erosion. So we feel like the south side trail may give Public Works some options for some creek bank stabilization that may or may not be needed. I haven't researched that to its fullest extent. So at this point, the next slide, if you could, please. This is my high-level look at the opinion of probable cost. I just compared what I hope are apples-to-apples numbers for both trail sizes. As you can see, the Option A, which would be the south side, the length is shorter. The, the trail size is the same. The excavation, clearing, grubbing, so forth, will be slightly higher per foot based on a little bit more remote location. However, both locations are going to be difficult to get heavy machinery into. So I think there are going to be small machines doing this work. As you compare Option B, there's a lot longer trail, slightly less unit price cost, but they come out to be similar numbers. I saw and reviewed the original, or the current plan that had an elevated walkway along that south side, just absolutely beautiful. But as you can imagine, those costs are substantially higher. If we just build a similar concrete trail along that south side, the numbers will compare very favorable, if not a little bit cheaper. So in closing, we feel like this is worth a second look. We think there's more data to be had. I am certainly at the, able to meet with the parks department and/or Public Works, with the HOA board, as well as the current parks consultant, to look at ideas, get creative, have different ideas and different opinions so that this city council can have good information, good numbers, and be able to make a good, solid decision. So with that, I'm obviously able to answer any questions, but I know this is not an action item, so that may not be possible.
Thank you. That is not possible. And your 10 minutes is up. Actually, you should have had six or so, but thank you very much. We appreciate it. And if you listen to the work session, we will be in touch. Thank you very much. The next person on the list is Deepak Jayavant.
Mark Meyer.
Mr. Meyer, did?
Yes. My name is Mark Meyer. I live at 620 Waverly Lane.
Mr. Meyer, your, your time is up. I'm sorry. The combined time that you guys had, you exceeded and went to 10 minutes.
I was, I thought we had 20 minutes is what we were told?
No, you had two minutes each.
And we had a whole bunch of people register for two minutes each? Correct?
I have three people.
I'm sorry, that's three people to speak. We have a list of people from your, people that set this up, a whole bunch of people that listed for two minutes.
I spoke with Mark Henry, who said that he was going to confirm that you all would have their time. I sent a list of about 10 people that had requested to speak and then they requested that they all yield their time to your three speakers.
That would be 20 minutes, correct?
Mr. Meyer, you have two minutes.
Okay, my name is Mark Meyer. I live at, live at 620 Waverly Lane. And I'm the homeowner in Capel for 31 years. My background is a Texas real estate broker since 1985 and I work with construction companies. I have the privilege of serving as president of Magnolia Park. So I do know that serving is not always fun and sometimes puts us or any board member through decisions that's not fun. So tonight, I know this working session is designed and to recommend Design A or B. I would like to summarize that due to the original bike path being recommended to be changed on the north side, that's why we hired Jeff Cronell. As you just heard, he's an expert civil engineer. Our main concern was to see if he perceived these options were what the park board had recommended on the location and the cost. But we understand that this recommendation was based on an estimate from Hafen Associates for anywhere from 984,000 to 1.2 million is what was discussed in the last meeting. It appeared to us that these estimates are too high, in our opinion. They were clearly, in our opinion, not looking for an economical situation. And I personally have had experience with Hafen Associates. I have some examples I'd be glad to provide, but they were several times, two times more expensive than other civil engineer companies. And I know that a lot of companies with different quotes, different understandings, different engineer way to do things. But we believe that with Jeff, working with a joint working session would be beneficial for all of us concerned. This pond gets drainage from multiple sources and I, I truly understand that soil instability is in two different departments. But if the Grapevine Dam opens up those floodgates again, like it did in 2015, it is probable that we could have another breach. And if it does breach, we've got a major problem. And when we presented our concerns to the park board meeting last month, we weren't allowed any earned action. I appreciate the chance to, to talk in front of you. However, what we heard is that the park view, the park board viewed the soil erosion and the problems there is not relevant to this decision. And so, you know, we would like to recommend that we do have this benefit of everybody getting together. And we are, we're appealing to you that Magnolia Park.
Would you please wrap it up? Your two minutes is up. Would you please wrap up your comments?
I think he's off the line.
Okay. Okay, the next person on our list for citizens' appearance is Deepak Jayavant.
Yes, ma'am. You got that right.
Oh, great. Please say your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Deepak Jayavan. I live in 670 Windsor Road, Capel. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak. As a resident of the West Haven community and I also run the neighborhood watch for over 300 houses here, about 1,000 residents. And the West Haven and, if I may, Eastlake community, we have about five entrances coming off the access road 121. And there is no exit or, you know, a return for us to come back into 121 once we leave the 121 access way. The way I look at this, and I've done some analysis, is that the only way after you leave, the one way, 121 access road, is for you to take a U-turn, which takes about nine minutes, which is 4.6 miles. Or you have to take the 121 business way, which is nine minutes, 3.9 miles. Or you have to go around Denton Tap via Parkway, which takes 11 minutes, 11 minutes and 4.5 miles. Now, if, in the event that there is a accident or the access road is blocked for some reason, for construction or other reasons, it is going to become a major choke point for office going, school going, or in terms of emergency. The, the fire station that was built recently, and thanks to the city for getting that done, has drastically cut down the response time and the distance. So I think we are safe in that manner. From a, from a PD response, I think we still have the same issue because Parkway is where the original fire station and PD was that was serving our community. So from a PD response, I think we still have the same issue. And, and all I'm asking is if we can consider a two-way road, a two-way access road into the community from whichever means, whether it be from the freeway or whether it would be even the Waverly Lane, which is the closest. which is the closest point to the Eastlake Drive, which is about 1,000 feet. And I'm only saying if that two-way lane can be used only for state vehicles, in terms of emergency only, if this could be considered, that is all I'm asking, and if the council would consider this, I'm more than happy to work with Public Works projects, as well as council members and the HOA involved, to see what the possibilities could be. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next person is Vijay Kumar Mandiram.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Vijay Mandiram. I'm a resident of West Haven, and the address is 629 Canterbury Court, Capel, Texas. I've been living in the city last 10-plus years, and I love the city. I'm living in the West Haven community last five years. A couple of issues, one, I mean, addressed by Deepak is more on the access point, that is one of the high-priority items for us, as well as the 121 from when we are exiting from our community. Making a right on the Denton Tap, it is becoming like more than 10 minutes' time in the peak time, and I understand the city already approved a right-only lane in 2019, but so far, I'm in very little work we see on the ground, but if maybe the city might be thinking of starting the project anytime. So, those are two issues, one is the 121 service road, the right access lane on the Denton Tap, and an alternate entrance to our community, those are the two high-priority issues we have as a resident of West Haven.
Thank you very much. The last person that we have that signed up, sent us a letter, and Ms. Ashley, will you read that into the record?
Yes, ma'am. The letter starts off with, "City's address, Capel Town Center, 255 East Parkway Boulevard, Capel, Texas, 75019. Please read this during the citizens' appearance for the next city council meeting. When I watched the February 23 city council meeting, I was shocked at John Jun's conduct and tone. Karen Hunt has served Capel for many years, and our lives are better off for her service. His attacks on Mike Land were also wrong behavior. Mr. Jun has only been in office for a few months and is acting like he knows it all and attacking people who have served Capel for a long time. If he was smart, he would listen and learn a while before claiming to know better than everyone else. I was offended by his conduct. Sincerely, Shane Murphy, 726 Hawk Lane, Capel, Texas."
Thank you. That is the end of our citizens' appearances. Is there anybody else that we have? Ashley, is there anything else, anybody else?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. Our next item is item seven, and that is the consideration of the minutes from February 23, 2021. Is there any comments or questions about the minutes? Councilmember Roden.
Thank you, Mayor. Move to approve item seven.
By Councilmember Long, all in favor.
Long, Kenessa Smith, Mays Roden, John Matthew Hill, in favor, none opposed, the motion carries.
Thank you very much. Item eight is a public hearing, so I will open the public hearing. Consider approval of a zoning change request from PD 184 SFED to PD 184 R2 SFED to incorporate the existing carriage house as part of the planned development district and allow the addition of a guest suite, pool pavilion, game room, greenhouse, porch, and new entry gate to the existing residential unit located on 5.067 acres of land located at 748 DeForest Road at the request of Merrick Architecture on behalf of the property owner, Parker Kobel. And we have Mary Peron Boswell here, with, it looks like, several guests to help us with this. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, thank you for letting me present this evening. This is item eight, it is a public hearing. This property is located at 748 DeForest Road, which is just west of MacArthur on the north side of DeForest. It's approximately 5.1 acres, and does back up to Denton Creek. Next slide, please. So, the original PD was approved in 2000, and this allowed for the original residence, which is identified as number one on the screen in blue. Then later on, in 2002, a carriage house was added. This has a two-story structure with a garage on the ground floor and then a room on the second floor. So, this was approved with a building permit and inspected, but was not part of the original PD. What is before you this evening, the new additions, what they're requesting is to have a guest suite, a pool pavilion, which are identified in the yellow, and then game room, greenhouse, porch, and a new entry gate. So, this is all essentially occurring to the rear of the main structure. So, you can see on the map before you, the orange is the guest house, the pool pavilion and the game room. Over in the green, to the right, identified number nine, is the greenhouse, and then we have some additional concrete work that will happen. Down in your lower left is the proposed entry gate that'll come off of DeForest Road. Next slide, please. So, the entrance off of the forest, there is an existing entrance, this is proposed to be modified, so the existing retaining wall will be reconstructed. A new entrance feature and gate is proposed. Currently, the gate is a sliding gate. The new proposed gate will have swinging gates that will open into the property. The fire department will require that the entry gate be equipped with the GTT optocom sensor for emergency apparatus to open the gate, and a NOX override in the event of any malfunction. So, originally with this plans that we received, there was no planned improvements to the driveway. So, there is an existing asphalt driveway. If you notice from the first slide, that driveway is fairly long, it's a little over a quarter mile from the entry gate off the forest to the main parcel at the back where the house is. So, while most residences are accessed off of a street or fire lane that's constructed typically of concrete, this driveway is asphalt. So, the fire department did have some concern about, you know, the weight of a fire truck traveling down this quarter mile of land. So, staff is concerned that, you know, if the driveway is damaged, that they have to respond to a call here. One of the PD conditions that we did list is that the city will not be responsible for repairing the driveway for any damage that may be caused because of the call at this address for emergency apparatus. Next slide, please. As I mentioned, the original house was, or PD was approved in 2000. In 2002, they did approve a carriage house, which is existing on the property. So, this is the floor plan. Next slide, please. So, this is a two-story building with a garage on the ground floor and a room upstairs with a bathroom, located to the west of the main house along the circular drive, and was attached originally with a pergola to the main house. Next slide, please. So, as I mentioned, the majority of the new development will occur behind the existing house, backing up to Denton Creek. Construction will begin with the extension of the concrete slab identified in yellow at the rear of the existing house, and the addition of a covered porch area. Next. The new covered porch area will match the main house in color, and will have a stone veneer. So, within this, they'll have, you know, a built-in grill, smoker, and countertop proposed. Next slide. A new guest suite of approximately 810 square feet is proposed to be located along the west side of the pool. It is a one-story building, approximately 18 feet in height to the roof peak. This building is proposed to contain a guest bathroom and bedroom. This will not be rented out, but available for visiting family. The building also contains a pool bathroom, which will have a toilet, sink, and shower that is accessible only from the outside, so you can see that on the southern portion of that slide. Next. The building will be mostly of stone veneer with a cast stone band. The roofing for all of the new construction will be a Tesla shingle roof. Next slide, please. To the east of the guest suite, a pool house with approximately 2,300 square feet with a kitchen is proposed. This building is proposed to contain a cooktop and an island, sink, oven, refrigerator, freezer, and large open area. This portion of the pool house is directly north of the pool and opens up into a bar and game room to the east of the pool. So, to your left is the kitchen area, and then to the right, where the L kind of dips down, is the bar area and game room. Next. Also, a pool storage room is part of this building, again, only accessible from the outside. Pool equipment will be located beside this and screened with a wooden fence. Next slide. So, a concrete pad with a trellis of nine feet seven inches in height is proposed between the pool area and the new pool house. Next slide. A greenhouse, approximately 392 square feet in size, is proposed to the east of existing residents, and approximately anywhere from 44 to 120 feet from the adjacent properties. It's just under 17 feet in height. Next. So, the first 10 feet will be stone like the other buildings, with the remaining portion a skylight. Next slide, please. This is a material color board, so illustrating the types of materials to be used for the new construction. We've got some stone veneer, a little bit of speco, wood soffit, stone trim, Tesla shingle roofs, and some metal. Next slide, please. So, we did send out notices, both within, 55 within 200 feet and 249 within 800 feet. So, staff did receive quite a few phone calls, letters, emails, in terms of just basic inquiry. Whenever we have a zone change sign go up, it does develop quite a bit of interest typically. With this one in particular, I think most people were, had ideas of what was going, of what they thought was happening. I think there was some people concerned that it was an additional entrance being added, or that it was going to be a new subdivision, new houses, or a multifamily or converted to a business. So, I got to hear a whole bunch of different assumptions. So, the majority of people that I did get to speak with, you know, informed them that this was a single-family residence, they're just looking to add on these structures for their own family use, and the majority of people, once they heard that, I think were relieved, and, but there were still some concerns overall. So, the majority of inquiries, as I said, was just centered around finding out what was being requested. There were concerns about drainage and how this, the new structures would impact drainage onto the site. There was some concern with, you know, is it going to be turning into a business or a short-term rental? Our conversations with the owner indicated that this is solely for his family, he's looking to improve the property so that his family can live there comfortably. So, we did receive, as I said, within the 200 feet, what was sent to the platform, three people in favor, two were opposed, and one was neutral. We did receive some additional letters from people within 800 feet. The general consensus was, as I said, just trying to figure out what was going on. As I said, drainage was a big concern for most people. In our evaluation of the site, as I said, all of the construction will happen to the rear of the property, and drainage will happen onto Denton Creek. So, none of the drainage is proposed to impact the residences adjacent to this property. Next slide. So, the Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously recommended approval of PD 184 R2-SFED 748 DeForest Road, subject to the following conditions. One, that there may be additional comments at the time of building permit and detailed engineering review. Two, that building permit shall be required for all proposed buildings, structures, paving, and fences. Three, that the city shall not be responsible for any repairs to the driveway for responding to calls at this address. Four, that gates to be equipped with the optocom sensor for emergency apparatus to open the gate, and NOX override in the event of malfunction. Next slide. Five, that all new structures will be equipped with an NFPA-13R sprinkler system and shall provide complete coverage, including small rooms. Six, to allow the existing garage carriage house, as shown on the plans. Seven, to allow for the proposed accessory buildings to be taller than 12 feet in height, as shown on the plans. Number eight, to allow for accessory structures with a bedroom, kitchen, and bathroom, plumbing as shown on the plans. Number nine, that the accessory unit shall not be rented or leased out separately from the main house. That is the end of my presentation. The applicants, representatives are here as well this evening to answer any questions.
Thank you. Will the applicant or representatives, do you have anything to add to the presentation?
Hi, I'm Scott Mark, the architect. I don't have, I think she covered it pretty well. I guess just to reiterate, we're looking at doing an addition to the back of this house and designing it, decided not to do an attached structure, tried to leave the main house as its own element, and then use the kind of beauty of the large lot to make, to spread out and make the yard part of the house and do these accessory structures, and I think she presented the design well. Y'all, if you have any questions about it, I can hopefully answer what you need.
Okay, thank you. Could you give us your address for the record, please?
My physical address?
Yes.
5115 McKinnney Avenue, Suite E, that's Dallas, Texas, 75205.
You very much. Did anyone sign up to speak?
No, ma'am.
Okay, so no one has signed up to speak, so I'm going to turn it over to council, Councilmember Roden.
Thank you. I like the addition, it's, you know, fitting with the property, et cetera. I do have a question for Ms. Peron Boswell. Obviously, fire department looked at this because of the comments about the NOX box and the potential damage to the asphalt. Was there any discussion of a fire lane? You know, I see this as similar in size to some commercial buildings. I realize it's fully sprinkled, but I'm assuming fire department did not have concern about getting access to the backside of the property?
No, sir, we didn't mention anything about adding additional fire lane. If you go to the, when you drive up the driveway, and then there's a big circular drive, so I believe that should take care of what they're needing to access the structures.
So, assuming by them not bringing it up, they had no issue with it?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments, Councilmember John?
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Peron Boswell, in these type of situation, do we ever contact the HOA to get any of their feedback?
So we did send out letters, as I mentioned, to two hundred and eight hundred feet. And I do have letters from, you know, the neighbors that were, you know, that are impacted.
But we never sent it to the HOA or anything when something like this happens?
If there's, if there's like an HOA lot there, then they'll get a letter. I'd have to check to see if, if the HOA got it. I don't know off the top of my head.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion. Council member Mays.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to close the public hearing and approve item number eight with conditions.
Thank you. Is there a second by Mayor Pro Tem Hill? All in favor?
Mal, Ken, Ossie Smith, Mays, Roden, John, Matthew Hill in favor, none opposed, the motion carries.
Thank you very much, and I need to recuse myself from the next item nine. And I'm going to turn the meeting over to Mayor Pro Tem Hill.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. All right. Item nine is a public hearing, and I'd like to open the hearing to consider the approval of zoning change request from C Commercial to PD three zero five dash C Plan Development dash three oh five dash Commercial to amend the detailed site plan to allow for a fourteen hundred square foot proposed Smoothie King drive-through and the existing eight hundred and seventy-five square foot Donut City restaurant with two future parking spaces on zero point eight four two acres of land located at two oh five North Denton Tap Road at the request of property owner Mahesh Nasta, being represented by Greg Franca of GPF Architects. We have Mr. Matt Steer with us to provide a presentation. Go ahead, please, sir.
Mayor Pro Tem, council, good evening. This is located on the west side of North Denton Tap Road, north of Town Center Drive, just north of the Sonic Drive-Up Restaurant. In December two thousand, the city council approved the site plan in Minor Platt for a four thousand square foot building on the subject property. Yulin, can you go to the presentation, please? Okay, right there. In August two thousand and one, council approved a special use permit to permit a donut shop in this structure. And then in November of last year, a site plan amendment was approved to revise the existing site plan to include a eight hundred and ninety-four, or eight hundred and sixty-four square foot addition to the southernmost portion of the building, removing the drive-through and doing other site modifications. Before this was constructed, Smoothie King approached, approached the plaza owner to occupy the thirteen hundred and fifty southernmost lease space of the building and retain the drive-through. Because the applicant is requesting to install two future parking spaces that slightly encroach into the perimeter landscaping and because Smoothie King is a restaurant with, with a drive-through, with residential adjacency, a plan development for the, is required for the variance and the use respectively. Next slide, please. Next slide. The, the four thousand square foot building here is shown in red. Next slide. The Smoothie King is proposing to occupy the thirteen hundred and fifty square foot southernmost lease space. Next slide. This, there's, the front portion is six hundred and thirty-five square feet. That'll be, that's shown in purple, and that's the customer area. The rear of the lease space is seven hundred and fifty square feet, and that's where the employees make your smoothie. Next slide. Parking, the parking required for the combined uses is twenty-seven, and these are calculated as follows. There's twenty-two parking spaces for the restaurant uses. That's calculated one, one parking space per one hundred square feet and five parking spaces for the dry cleaners. So there are twenty-five existing parking spaces on the site. And next slide. And then they're proposing two parking spaces to be constructed in the future. And these are shown on the western portion of the site. At this time, staff and the Planning and Zoning Commission are comfortable in granting a two parking space variance to the parking requirement as the applicant has provided information stating that eighty percent of the, the customers or the total store sales are done through the drive-through window and not indoors. And the, the donut shop actually closes at noon, so this frees up some parking in the afternoon and evening hours. The applicant has noted that the future parking spaces will be constructed if needed or when the change in the tenant mix necessitates more parking under the current zoning ordinance. Next slide. One additional tree is needed to fulfill the perimeter landscape requirement on the west side, and that's been added. Next slide. The applicant is proposing to modify the southern elevation at the drive-through to accommodate Smoothie King. The existing drive-through has a sliding glass door that will be removed and a new pass-through vehicular window will be installed with matching brick and stone at, right below the window. Next slide. The attached building signage, as shown in the rendering, is compliant with the sign ordinance. Next slide. The menu board will be located just west of the building at the southern end. The microphone speaker will face south with the noise directed away from the residences, which are located to the west and to the north. And because the menu board structure will be neutral in color and is directly behind the main building, the Planning and Zoning Commission and staff are recommending relief from the eighty percent masonry requirement as we've done with the one fifty-one coffee and the Deli Man cases. Next slide. We sent out eighteen letters within two hundred feet and seventy-three courtesy notices within eight hundred feet. We received two letters in opposition. One's located at one eight eight Diamond Ridge. This is directly behind the request and to the west with nothing noted on the letter. So I reached out to the property owner. He says he's, he's pro-business. He likes, even likes Smoothie King, but just has some concerns related to the traffic and the idling of engines waiting in the drive-through. So I offered to send him a Zoom invite to this meeting and, and he, in the end, he could not attend. The other letter was from another property, which was directly behind this request, center behind it at the one ninety-two Diamond Ridge. And her letter stated their bedroom window faces the back of the building. The screening wall, she said it was eight and a half, or I'm sorry, five and a half feet tall. I confirm that it is indeed six foot high, six foot in height on the business side at least. She had concerns related to noise, privacy, and air quality. And she noted that the previous tenants, the, the dry cleaners used to occupy this lease space. The previous tenants' traffic flow was mainly before, before work and after work hours, whereas this would be all throughout the day and even into the evening. She stated that they're already negatively impacted by the Sonic and other food and beverage establishments and the drive-throughs within a short distance from each other. And the resident actually attended, or virtually attended the P and Z meeting and spoke during the public hearing. And after, after listening to her concerns, the commission added two items to the approval recommendation. The first was that the menu board have a shield to directionalize the sound away from the residences. And they added a condition that says no changes in lighting, the parking lot lighting, until the future parking is constructed. And at that time, it shall comply with the glare and lighting standards of the zoning ordinance. And the glare and lighting standards basically allows for parking lot safety while protecting the adjacent residences as well. And we are also going to ask that the proposed live oak on the western property line be adjusted a little further south, which will better screen the property and will also provide enough room for growth as there's a large tree in the rear of her property. So I followed up with the resident after the meeting, and she was impressed at how thorough the review was, was satisfied with the conditions added. I asked if she wanted to attend the Zoom meeting, and she said it wouldn't, wouldn't be necessary. Next slide. Ultimately, the Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously recommended approval of this request, subject to the following conditions. One, allowing the two residential, or two restaurant uses, the Donut City and Drive-Thru Smoothie King, abutting a residential zoning. Two, hours of operations shall not exceed the following. Smoothie King's ten to eight on Sunday, seven to nine Monday through Friday, and eight to nine on Saturday. Donut City is six AM to noon Tuesday through Sunday, and they're closed on Monday. Three, signage shall be as indicated on the rendering or in compliance with the signage section of the zoning ordinance. Next slide. Menu boards shall be located as shown on the site plan and granted an exception to the eighty percent masonry requirement. Speakers shall be shielded to deflect the sound away from the residential properties to the west. Five, a construction development permit through the Public Works Department shall be required for the future parking. If additional lighting is needed, this shall comply with the glare and lighting standards of the zoning ordinance. And this shall be constructed if needed or when the change in tenant mix necessitates more parking under the current zoning ordinance. And number six is to add an overstory tree on the western property line. That concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions. The applicant's architect, Greg Franca, is also on the call. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Steer. So we've got the architect Greg Franca on the line, as well as the owner Mahesh Nasta and Kevin Butkus. If any of you have anything to add, please state your name and address and be sure to unmute your microphone.
Mayor and council members, am I coming through?
Yes, you are.
Thank you. My name is Mahesh Nasta. I live in Copel at three three six Waterview Drive. I've been in Copel for fifteen years, and I'm the property owner. We, we have a small request come up for consideration by the council. In, you know, in an attempt to keep the drive-through traffic moving, we would like to request the menu board, if it can be slid over, you know, slightly in the island that's behind the drive-through lane, nine feet. It would still be facing west towards Sonic. It would still have the, the shield to protect, you know, the noise. And it would give Smoothie King a little more time to prepare the smoothies and enable the traffic to keep moving as people would not have to wait when they get to the pickup window. Greg, is there anything you want to add?
No, Matt, this is Greg Franca, GPF Architects, four one three West Bethel Road, two oh two Copel, Texas. Matt did a thorough presentation, and this request by Smoothie King came up just Monday morning, yesterday morning.
All right, that's a quick turnaround. So this is a public hearing. No one has signed up to speak at the public hearing, but we did receive ten emails on the case. And we have Ashley Owens here to read them in for the record. Ashley?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. First one is, and I apologize for the pronunciation, Wahaj Haak at thirteen oh six Jennings Court in Copel, Texas. To whom it may concern, I am writing to oppose the change of zoning for the proposed location of Smoothie King and Donut City. I fear that allowing this change will cause an increase in traffic to a highly congested intersection already. My children go to Copel High School, and the morning, midday, and early afternoon traffic is very dangerous. They often walk to Sonic, Wendy's, and Subway during the day. They have expressed the danger of cars traveling through that intersection. For customers wanting to go northbound Denton Tap, they would need to, they would need to southbound first and U-turn at MacArthur. I anticipate customers going through Sonic and breaking the one-way traffic law to pull out at the light on Town Center Drive. This will make it very dangerous for all Copel High School students walking home or frequenting the Sonic. Please consider the danger from increased traffic with this new proposal. Wahaj Haak. Second email is from Ramiza Haak, also at thirteen oh six Jennings Court. I am writing this letter to oppose the zoning change requested from C to PD three zero five C. I frequent this plaza often, and I think a drive-through will cause a lot of unnecessary traffic. The high school is nearby and, and make of, make of them walk around during the day and especially after school. The Sonic entrance off Denton Tap is one-way, and the traffic at that area will cause a ton of congestion because of the drive-through. The addition of this drive-through will not be good for the area of the city. Thank you for listening. Ramiza Haak. Second, excuse me, third email. This email is from Sharon Ford at four eighty-six Harris Street in Copel. This email is to serve as opposition to the below-referenced item of tonight's city council meeting regarding the proposed Smoothie King drive-through on Denton Tap Road. This has been a difficult year for small businesses, and I think the citizens of Copel prefer to spend their dollars in locally-owned coffee and smoothie shops around town rather than national chains that are putting others out of business. Please deny this zoning request. The next one is from Brad Ford at four eighty-six Harris Street in Copel. This email is to serve as opposition to the below-referenced item of tonight's city council meeting regarding the proposed Smoothie King drive-through on Denton Tap Road. This property backs up to residential homes, and an additional drive-through restaurant is detrimental to property values. Additionally, consider the environmental impact and traffic flow if eighty percent of business is handled at the drive-through of that small parking lot. That intersection is already congested with one-way traffic through Sonic and at any given hour due to high school drivers. Further, this has been such a difficult year for small businesses, and I think the citizens of Copel prefer to spend their dollars in locally-owned coffee and smoothie shops around town rather than national chains that are potentially putting others out of business. Please deny this zoning request. The next one is from Rochelle Clack. And she does not list her address. To whom it may concern, I am rushing to gather my thoughts here as it has been brought to my attention that a vote on this matter is scheduled to occur within the hour. As a business owner myself, I know firsthand the pros and cons to having competitors in your proximity. However, in a small town such as Copel, some competition can be detrimental to a business. I am writing in support of Smoothie Factory and requesting that the zoning change for Smoothie King be denied. I question if the demand can even support multiple smoothie vendors, especially with product offerings that are incredibly similar. Having both in such close proximity would run the risk of neither business being profitable enough in the long run to keep their doors open. This would be a lost for all of us in the end. And not to mention, there's a Smoothie King only a few miles away, just out the, just outside the city limits at six thirty-five and Beltline. Additionally, I've been a regular customer of Smoothie Factory for many years, and during the time have come to personally know the owners, their family, and some of their employees. I know how they have embraced the community and even added a kids' menu after many parents requested kid-sized, healthy snack options. I know firsthand the challenges of the seasonality of the business and the impact the pandemic has compounded. I am asking that you give this family, this business, a chance to not only recover but to then continue on a successful trajectory. Furthermore, I would like to point, I would like to point towards the potential traffic congestion and challenges in this space, especially after-school hours and during rush hour. This potential rise in congestion in the proposed space also raises concerns regarding our many middle and high school students walking home through that corridor. During the pandemic, we have seen a few Copel treasures close their doors permanently. It pains me- It pains me to think that we could potentially lose another. Please deny the request for Smoothie King. Respectfully, Rochelle Clack. The next email is from Keisha Vaughn at 202 Chinaberry Way. This email is to serve as opposition to the below-referenced item of tonight's city council meeting regarding the proposed Smoothie King drive-through on Denton Tap Road. As a resident of Capella since 1989, I have witnessed many businesses, especially small businesses, close. And given that this has been a difficult year for small businesses, I think now more than ever, the citizens of Capella prefer to spend their dollars in our current locally-owned coffee and smoothie shops around town rather than national chains that are potentially putting others out of business. We know from history that when we have multiple similar businesses in close proximity, typically at least one of the businesses doesn't survive and we all lose out. Please deny this, please deny this zoning request. I have a few more, sorry. This is from Trudy Bad or Bade. To whom it may concern, I'd like to voice my concern to the addition of Smoothie King to its proposed location in Capella. Why be directly across from an already family-owned franchise local smoothie business, Smoothie Factory, who has been there for years and is supported by so many in our community? Smoothie Factory has held and still holds a strong location in Capella, and to add a direct competitor in Smoothie King, maybe just, maybe just 200 yards away, seems unrealistic to the growth of any of their businesses. Please consider my opposition to the proposed zoning change as stated on agenda for this location. Capella resident and supporter of Smoothie Factory. Next email is from Sophia Birch. Hello, I hope this email finds you well. I am writing this email to oppose the Smoothie King drive-through on Denton Tap Road. As someone who has gone to Smoothie Factory for years, I don't think it's logical to allow another smoothie store in Capella. Capella has a hard time keeping businesses in town, and for Smoothie Factory to succeed as long as it has, I don't agree with putting up competition. Competition is not a bad thing, but it can put both businesses out of business. Also, it has been such a difficult year for small businesses, and I think the citizens of Capella prefer to spend their dollars on smoothie shops around town rather than national chains that are potentially putting others out of business. I'm requesting that you please deny this zoning request. And this email is from Gabriela Anin. To whom it may concern, as a resident of Capella for more than 10 years, we have seen our fair share of businesses closing. Along with the challenge this year has brought, our community is committed to supporting and preventing other, another business from closing its doors. With the proposal of a potential Smoothie King opening in our city, we are driving business away from a current, well-respected business establishment in Smoothie Factory. The current owners of Smoothie Factory have been supportive of its community in return, from partnerships with local gyms, donations to school, giving back with reward programs, et cetera. From a business standpoint, I understand the idea of providing options to patrons and allowing for competitive markets in our community. However, adding in yet another small business in close proximity can have its disadvantages. Why sacrifice a current business in our community for another? Our town has suffered enough closures long before COVID, i.e. similar businesses and restaurants. Let's not do the same to Smoothie Factory. Please consider our opposition in approving the opening of Smoothie King. Best, Gabby. And that was the last email that we received.
All right. Thank you so much, Ms. Owens. You get a well-deserved rest after that reading. So let's turn it over to council for discussion. Hold on one second. Yes, Brianna, please go ahead. Was that not Brianna?
Sorry. Okay. I'm sorry. I'd like to call for executive session and consult our, our attorney on this matter.
Mayor Protem will have to have the room opened up as that Zoom.
Please. That's correct. Please use the same exec, executive session link that was sent earlier in the day. You can still utilize that link.
Okay, we are going to adjourn into executive session and we'll return shortly.
Ashley, can you send that to me?
Yes, sir.
Thanks.
Mayor Protem, we're all back in, or they're all back in.
All right. All right, it is 9:01 and we're ready to reconvene regular session on item number nine of public hearing. And I believe we were discuss, having discussion among council. So let's continue that. Council members, do you have anything that you'd like to discuss? Yes, Councilmember June.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Hill. Some of the questions that the email is being read out was, one of the question that I had was if we ever actually did the, the traffic study, how it's going to be impacted in that Mr. Steer?
No, there wasn't, it wasn't a traffic study that was required for this request.
And even without Smoothie Factory going into that location, do we have an idea as to how the traffic impacts that location?
I'm going to defer that to our engineering staff. Is Kent on the call? Sorry, Kent.
No, it's okay. Yeah, no, no. Yes. The, the addition of a space like this in the context of the amount of traffic in this area really would not rise to, the question would be what improvements would, would potentially be asked of a development like this? And any improvements to surrounding infrastructure would have been required with the original construction of the building itself, not a new tenant associated or going into the space. So any improvements that would be required would already be in place. So that's why we would not require a traffic impact analysis for, for a development or a tenant addition of this size. So it's, it's really in the scope of the amount of traffic on Denton Tap, it is not a significant impact from a traffic standpoint.
Thank you.
Councilmember Roden.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Couple of things. One, I appreciate all the letters, emails from citizens and concern about our small businesses. Reality is that's not the purview of council and, and what I heard was that we wanted to support small businesses and I would hope that our citizens would continue to support the small local businesses that are already in operation. I live fairly close to this facility and a lot of us know the, the challenging history with that intersection and the reasoning for the, for the fence down the median. I'm not sure though that the Smoothie Factory, with all the volume that goes through Sonic and the other restaurants just to the south of this is going to, going to make a, a big difference. So I don't see that being a huge change there. It's just, it's a challenging intersection that, that, that folks just have to continue to, to be careful with, I think. I do have some concern for the, for the owner. The, the city's requirements for landscaping out front, those bushes were dyed and eventually cut down some time ago. We got a lot of complaints about that. They were replanted. And as far as I can recall are dead again. I see on the information we were giving, there's a note saying all plant material appears to be in healthy growing condition for the present season. I'm not sure that's the case, so I would, I would hope the owner would, would, would put those back in. And again, I appreciate everybody's concern that have, have given us input this evening. Thanks.
Any other council members? Councilmember Brianna Hosen Smith.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I know there was a change in the location of the, like where the, you order, right? So that to give them more time to make the smoothies. I guess from a city perspective, Mr. Steer, are we good with that change and is that?
Well, you know, I was, I advised not, I advised against the change. They, Greg, Greg had called me yesterday afternoon and it was a little late in the ballgame to make such as, such a change. They, they moved the menu board back 10 feet. And so I advised him not to change it or not to bring it up in the, in the meeting. And so, so this was the first I had heard that, that they were going forward with that change. So that does bring that menu board that we were trying to protect the residents against, it brings it closer to them. So I would advise that, that it remain where the Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed it and where, where we've done our analysis of the site. So it's, it's just 10 feet to the east. They're proposing to move it 10 feet to the west in that, in that island, but I would advise against it.
Okay, so, so again, so recommendation would be to leave it where it currently is or has been approved versus a change for today. The other thing too was from the sound perspective, I know they've talked about a shield. And that seems to have been approved by planning and zoning and the, and staff. I guess my question is, were there any, if you could remind me here, are there any other requirements that were put in place for other similar type businesses? I know we've had a couple come forward and we've talked about decibels and sound. Is there anything else here that we should consider?
Right, yeah. We, we had talked through the decibel levels and, and all that with 151 Coffee and then again with the Deli Man drive-through. And in the end, I don't believe we had put those restrictions on it, but we did directionalize their, the speakers. We directionalized the speaker for Deli Man and then we're directionalizing this speaker with the Shield. So I think that's sufficient. I went out there and, and blared my radio this, this afternoon and, and stood on the property line. And, you know, of course I had my windows down and I, I couldn't hear it through the ambient noise, but, but they, they were blowing. They had the lawn crew or the landscaping crew at Sonic. So I went back later in the afternoon, turned up my speakers and, and I could hear it very faint at the property line. So that's, you know, before you get to the screening wall, before you get to the, the yards of the residence. So I think, I think we're fine with the noise.
Okay, thank you. And I think the other question I had was with regards to parking, because I know we'll be two parking spots short of what's recommended and that's, can be considered for a later time. I guess with employees parking for the businesses that are there, plus maybe if like someone's smoothie isn't ready and they've got to pull off and park somewhere and then it be brought out. I mean, is, are there any concerns there with us running into any issues from a parking perspective? Because I just think that things like that come up sometimes, right? I mean, I've had that happen to me even at Whataburger where I've got to pull off and park and wait for my meal to come out because it's not ready in the drive-through, so.
Right, right. And so they were proposing a single drive-through lane, but, but like, like what you said, yeah, they do have you pull forward some of the time and then, then run the smoothie out potentially. I'm not sure their practice, but we could go ahead and have them install those, those future parking spaces right now. I wanted to leave it kind of subject to the conditions, subject to the operating conditions just because, you know, there is the donut shop that closes at noon and, and 80% of their, their traffic is through the drive-through. So I wanted to leave it to kind of a operational, you know, that would, that would be the determining factor is their operations.
Okay. And I guess until we have them up and running, we won't know whether those other two spots are absolutely needed sooner rather than later, it sounds like.
Right.
Okay. And I guess the last thing would be just thank you for all that. I think the other thing is just a, a comment. I mean, I, I, you know, want to thank everybody who provided their input, whether it was in favor or opposition. It's always good to hear that and understand people's different points of view. You know, we were asked to, from a council, to, to look at the actual planning and zoning requests that are before us and, you know, best use of, of that particular area. I think the other thing to consider is, you know, we've, there's a, there's a lot of donut shops and nail salons and other types of places around and I, I definitely know that it's been a difficult time and I'm sensitive to that. We have lots of great local businesses and, and are working really hard in making sure that our economic development is up and running and, and thriving despite all the difficulties. So please know that I, I do respect the comments and do appreciate everybody's input. So thank you.
All right. Councilmember Mays.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Matt, couple of clarifications. I'm reading through the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendations and item number four was that the menu board shall be located as shown on the site plan. Does that mean that, that was the position that you agreed upon or the one that was moved after the fact?
No, that was, that was the agreed, agreed-upon location.
So, okay, so in other words, if we say with conditions, it would be at the original location?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank, thank you. Second one. Number five is talking about the parking, should the tenant mix change at some point in the future? What is to trigger us as a city to, to catch that and, and ensure that that actually occurs sometime down the road?
Well, you know, it would just be on evaluation, you know, if, if they're, you know, overflowing in their parking, then we'd, we'd say, oh, we noticed you guys aren't, aren't meeting your parking, so go ahead and construct it. And they've, they've agreed to that. The, the second condition to that is, or when the change in tenant mix necessitates it. So let's say the donut shop goes away and the hours of operation are more, they coincide more directly with this business, then we would have them go ahead and construct it at that time as well.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Long.
Mayor Protem, thank you. As some of you know, I'm a small business guy here and I'm very pro-business for this city. And so in, in listening to, to the folks and I appreciate what they said and certainly respect their opinion, I'm looking at one small businessman who's involved here. opinion, I'm looking at one small businessman who's involved here, who happens to be the architect for this small business. So it's not just the Smoothie Group. There's an architect who is a small businessman in Copel, Texas. Our mayor had to recuse herself because she works for a bank, which apparently has got financial involvement in there. So that's another small business in Copel, Texas. So it's not always clear on the surface as to who you're talking about when those things happen. So that, you need to consider the whole when you're talking about the businesses here in town. I just wanted to say.
Any other ones? Okay, I would like to take up the concerns of some of the adjacent citizens who are concerned about the noise. And some of the other council members, you know, spoke to that, where we may have had in the past some regulations at the property line. And I think at 151 Coffee, we didn't consider it because the area that was going to have the piped-in music was way at the front of the building, but we're talking about the order taking station being further back towards the adjacent property owner. So I think it would be appropriate to set a decibel level for the speaker to be no more than 60 at the property line. And 60 is normal conversation level, and I don't think it should be any louder than that at the property line. I don't know if that's something that we other council members would want to consider. So any other comments? Yes, Councilmember Brianna Hozas Smith.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I would agree with that. I think you kind of finished my thought in that sense that I realize we have the Shield, but I think also taking into consideration the concerns of noise, and I know that came up even when we talked about another restaurant down the street that was looking to have a drive-through. And so we definitely want to respect that, especially considering the hours that are, you know, 10 to 9 or till 8 o'clock at night, and then you also have a lot of people working from home under the current situation. So I would be in favor of that.
All right, yes, Councilmember Matthews. Matthew, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I am also in agreement with you setting the decimal to 60 in consideration of this neighborhood. Neighbors wrote an email to us, so I think I agree with you as well. Thank you.
Anyone else? Councilmember Roden.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I would move to close the public hearing and approve item nine with conditions, with the added condition of establishing a 60-decibel level restraint at the property line between this property and the neighbors to the west.
Do we have a second? Councilmember Brianna Hozas Smith, second. Any discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Long, Keena Hozas Smith, Mays, Roden, John Matthew Hill, in favor. None opposed. The motion carries.
All right, can we bring back the mayor so I can sit back and enjoy the meeting? I thought maybe he'd left us.
I was telling them, it kind of sounded like Charlie Brown back there. You don't really hear the words, but you hear the noise. Thank you very much, Mayor Protem. Okay, so now let's go to item 10. Consider approval of awarding bid number Q0221-02 Denton Creek Grade Control Structure and Stream G6 Channel Stabilization to AB Construction LLC for the construction of the channel and the bank stabilization improvements in the amount of $958,100 funded through the 2020 bond proceeds and authorizing the city manager to sign all necessary documents. And we have Mr. Gully here today. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm here to present on agenda item number 10 and answer any questions you might have. Julian, next slide, please. In the couple of slides, before I jump into providing the construction scope and the bidding details, I just want to provide some background. So this slide provides background on our drainage channel system that flows through Copel. So there are two major creeks. One is Denton Creek that flows, that's on the north side, if you can see my arrow. So it goes through our Andy Brown Park and goes east along the border and then confluences with Elm Fork Trinity River just north of Sandy Lake. And then we have another major tributary to Denton Creek that is Cottonwood Branch that flows from southwest to northeast and confluence with Denton Creek at our Andy Brown Parks. And then another major creek is Grapevine Creek that is on the south side of the city that also flows from west to east along Belt Line and along the border of the city and then confluence with Elm Fork Trinity River just south of Belt Line and Leadbetter Road. Julian, next slide, please. So this slide shows the location of the two projects. Denton Creek Improvements will be on Denton Creek at the intersection of Denton Creek and Denton Tap Road. And then the Stream G6 Improvements, the Stream G6 is a tributary to Grapevine Creek. It's on the south side. It's just closer to the intersection of Moore Road and Willauard Lane. And then confluences with Grapevine Creek just northwest of Mockingbird and Belt Line. These two projects, even though they are two different locations, the improvements are very similar. So staff combined both those projects and bid out before getting a better bid pricing. Next slide, please. So this slide, going to provide a timeline of how we got here. Staff presented to council in April of 2019 in a work session, providing details of the concerns about risk of failure to city's infrastructure at Stream G6. At Stream G6, we have a couple of sanitary sewers that cross the Stream G6, and also we have a storm sewer outfall. Because of the channel degradation and also the bank failure, our infrastructure is exposed. The concrete casing along the infrastructure is degraded, and that exposure can lead into failure of our infrastructure at Stream G6. And at Denton Creek, we have where excessive transport of sediment from upstream reach to the downstream reach. The upstream reach is west of Denton Tap Road, and the downstream reach is like east of Denton Tap Road. So this excessive transport of sediment from upstream to downstream is depositing sediment on the downstream reach. With that deposition, it's increasing the flood elevations, and it's causing flood. So once we got the feedback from the council in April 2019, we went and we got proposals for developing the design, and we got approval from council in June and November of 2019 for the two projects. There were two consultants designing those two projects. Once the design was complete, staff bid out the two projects in January 2021, and we received five qualifying bids. Now we are here seeking approval for construction. Next slide, please. So this slide provides the existing conditions and also an overview of the improvements at the two locations. On the top, from left to right, is the existing conditions at the Stream G6. You can, so the crossings are the sanitary sewers across the Stream G6. You can see the concrete casing that's been getting degraded. And even in the second picture, the concrete is broken and also at the bank, the failure at the bank. And the third picture shows the channel degradation, the bed erosion of the concrete. At both Denton Creek and at the Stream G6, the typical improvements are using Gabian mattresses that is shown on the bottom left picture. There is a Gabian mattress that will be used for protection of the channel bed. And then the Gabian baskets, which is on the right side, they'll be used to protect the toe at the bank. And these Gabian baskets is also going to serve as a grade control structure at Denton Creek Improvements. Basically, the grade control structure separates, provides a great separation between the upstream and the downstream reach and controls the transport of the sediment to the downstream reach. And these improvements are not like the entire creek or entire tributary at Stream G6. These are only at certain locations where our infrastructure is at risk, and that is determined by developing hydraulic and hydrology models. Next slide, please. This slide provides information on bidding details and the funding source. We advertised for bids in January, and we received five qualifying bids, and the bids range from $958,100 to $1,787,200. And A and B Construction was the lowest bidder, which is $958,100. And the estimate, the bid price is lower than the engineer's estimate. The construction schedule for both the projects is estimated to be 180 days, and staff has been coordinating with the residents during the design and also before the construction. Staff will be coordinating with the residents about the construction schedule. Again, the project is funded through 2020 bonds, and the outcome of this project would be tied into our 2040 Vision Strategy of Foundation Pillar, that is Sustainable City Government, well-maintained city infrastructure. With that, Public Works recommends approval of this bid to A and B Construction LLC for Next slide, please. We'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions or comments? And Councilmember Mayor Protem Hill?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Gully, the Gabian mattresses you're using, what type of wire are you using?
Steel wire mesh.
Is it coated with PVC or is it stainless steel or is it just galvanized?
Stainless steel.
Okay, so life expectancy is probably 50 years or something like that, isn't it?
Right, right.
Okay. I just didn't, I want to make sure we weren't going the cheapest route and just, you know, going galvanized. All right, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Mays.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Gully, going back to one of the photos of the, I think it was Stream G6, just passed, it was, had the five photos on one page. The center photo looks like there's some bags of concrete stacked up. Was that part of, will we be removing that or is that part of the job?
So there are some resident backyards that are stabilized with bags. So as per our project, to protect our infrastructure, we will be putting Gabian baskets, and those Gabian baskets would expand like 50 feet on either side. So those sandbags will be removed, but it will be protected with a better stability.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion. Councilmember Matthew.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve agenda item number 10.
Is there a second? Mayor Protem Hill? All in favor?
Long, Keena Hozas Smith, Mays, Roden, John Matthew Hill, in favor. None opposed. The motion carries.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Mr. Gully, for assisting us.
Thank you.
Item 11. Consider approval of an award to enter into a contract with Quality Escavation LLC for the reconstruction of Cambria Drive and Wise Lane in an amount not to exceed $1,086,996 as budgeted in the 1/2 cent sales tax fund and authorizing the city manager to sign any necessary documents. And Ms. Brierton, welcome.
Hello. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Jamie Brierton. I'm the Capitol Programs Administrator in the Public Works Department, and I'm going to be presenting this item, number 11, and then item 12 also after this. They'll be very similar formats. So next slide, please, Julian. This is the location for Cambria Drive and Wise Way's reconstruction. It's the Quarter Cent IMF project. Next slide. Let's go ahead. And as you can see, Cambria Drive is just a cul-de-sac, and then Wise Way doesn't have any residences fronting on it, but it's a, just has the side yards attached to it, so it's a good little pickup while we're in there doing the other street. Next slide, please. So Cambria and Wise were originally constructed in the 1970s, and at that time, the paving design was intended to last 20 years, so we well exceeded that lifespan. The original budget was 1.5 million, and quality excavation came in with a base bed of $1,041,996, and then a potential incentive of $45,000, which we factor out, $1,500 a day with a max amount of $45,000. And that also goes for liquidated damages the other direction, it's $1,500 a day over the day's bid. So the total award would be $1,086,996. And the reconstruction scope for this residential road, these two residential roads include full pavement replacement, utility replacement rehabilitation, drainage improvements, and new sidewalks. And then this design increases it to a 30-year design in lieu of the previous 20-year design. Construction's anticipated to begin late spring, and then the estimated completion time is five months, which was bid at 150 calendar days. And then also, under separate contract, the amount is not to go to council, it's about $25,000 for geotechnical services will be provided by Alliance. So next slide. Here's some images of Cambria as it exists today, and that's kind of the end of the cul-de-sac where it ties into the park, and there's some, the drainage flume that you see there at the end. The sidewalk currently doesn't go all the way around the corner of the cul-de-sac, so that eliminates some of the pedestrian activity that we've got. And then the second... And then the second photograph shows just some of the drainage areas that are causing ponding water. Next slide. And then over the years, since it's built in the 1970s, you can see we've got a lot of patching going on. So we've done a lot of maintenance to keep it in good repair. But we've done both sides of the alleys, the north side and the south side of the Cambria Alley. And so now this is just kind of filling in that last piece for these residents to have a good driving surface. And so the nice thing is it's the same project team on our side that send both the alleyways. It's a different contractor, but they'll be very familiar with us and our inspectors and that process. And they've been really on both sides of the alleys, waiting for the road, asking when's the road coming. And so the residents have been pretty excited to have the road finally finished. Next slide. So upon approval of the contract, the contractor will begin pre-construction planning and coordinating. Part of that includes our standard neighborhood meetings. Typically, we send out a letter at the beginning or go do flyers on the doors as well for the neighbors that are affected. And then our normal pre-COVID environment would be a neighborhood meeting at the cul-de-sac or at an intersection where everybody would gather around and we would look at the big plot with the engineer and the contractor. But in the current environment, we're working with ES on coming up with kind of a hybrid solution. Similarly, we do the city council meetings. And so maybe a life safety park or an environment like that where folks can come in now and meet in person. Or we can do also at the same time an online meeting. That way, people have the opportunity to look at their houses on the map and see kind of the typical things that they're concerned about. And then maybe an opportunity as well to screenshot and share out some of those residences' addresses. If they, typically, people want to see what's happening in their front yard and just the overall scope of the project. So those are things that are easily accommodated in a hybrid-style meeting. So I think we're gonna challenge ourselves and be up for that first round of post-COVID meetings. Our last one was pre-COVID, so it'll be a little bit different, but we can accommodate. And we're recommending approval with Quality Excavation. We've had the good fortune of working with them on the Town Center Boulevard project. And it's the same project team. That was in 2018. So we're pretty confident that we'll have a success as we did on our first project with them. So if you guys have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you very much for that presentation. Does anybody have questions or comments? I know we've been looking at this for quite some time, and it's nice that it's coming to fruition. So if there are no questions, Councilmember Mace?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to move to approve item number 11.
Second by Councilmember Roden, all in favor?
Long, Keenan Smith, Mace Roden, John Matthew Hill, in favor, none opposed, the motion carries.
Thank you. And then item 12, consider approval to enter into a contract with Advanced Contracting Group for the reconstruction of various alleyways in the city of Capell in the amount of $899,025 as budgeted in the Quarter Cent Infrastructure Maintenance Fund and authorizing the city manager to sign any necessary documents. And Ms. Brierton is here again to walk us through this one.
Great, thank you. So go ahead, next slide, Julian. And this neighborhood replacement project, the alley replacement project focuses on three alleys. Go ahead and next slide. So it's outlined here is the Phillips Drive Alley, Simmons Drive Alley, and Oriole Lanes Alley. Next slide. So most of these alleys were similarly constructed with most of Capell in the 1980s and have reached the end of their useful life. This is the fifth round of the alley replacement projects within the city. And we budgeted $1 million for that, for this project. Advanced Contracting Group's bid was $899,025. We've also worked with them, it's actually at the same time as we worked with Quality Excavation from the previous slideshow. And that was in 2017 when we worked with them on an alley project successfully in the past. So it'll be a similar project and similar scope to when we last worked with them. The reconstruction scope includes full-depth alley replacement and drainage improvements. And we're also anticipated to start late spring with an estimated completion time of three and a half months, which is what they bid was 100 calendar days. Next slide. These are just some photographs of the Phillips Alley. And just over time, they failed. The concrete is, as you can see, in need of replacement. Next slide. And similarly, the Oriole Alley. Next slide. And then finally, the Simmons Alley. Next slide. And on approval of this contractor, we will also begin pre-construction planning and coordination and resident notification and coordination. And then in addition, we work very closely with Republic Trash Services to coordinate heavily on trash days locations. Since we do service the residents three times a week, that's, communication is key in that regard as well as people wanting to know when they can get in and out of their garages and driveways. And so since this is our fifth turn on this style of project, we've gotten pretty good at figuring out how much roadway or how much alleyway we can remove and replace and how quickly we can move down the alleys. And we've gotten a really good group of project inspectors and construction team that has been able to handle that and figure out those workings fairly well with Republic. And so we're recommending approval with Advanced Contracting Group in the amount of $899,025. And also be happy to answer any questions on this one.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Councilmember Mace?
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Barton, on Simmons. Simmons is actually a loop, and there's actually three alleys that touch Simmons, one in the center and two on each side. Are we just doing the one in the center?
Yes, sir. Yes, just the center.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion. Councilmember Mace?
Sorry, I have to read just to make sure I get the right one. I move to approve item number 12.
Thank you. Is there a second? Councilmember Matthew, all in favor?
Long, Keenan Smith, Mace Roden, John Matthew Hill, in favor, none opposed, the motion carries.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you being here with us. Item 13, consider approval of an ordinance of the city of Capell, Texas amending the Code of Ordinances by amending Chapter 9 General Regulations, Articles 9-1 Animal Services, Section 9-1-1 Definitions of the Code of Ordinances to add the definition of tether, tethering devices and properly fitted, amending the Code of Ordinances by amending Chapter 9 General Regulations, Article 9-1 Animal Services, Section 9-1-3, running at large of the Code of Ordinances by replacing it in its entirety and replacing it with the new section 9-1-3 running at large slash restraints and authorizing the mayor to sign. And we have Chief Barton here. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So we returned after two work sessions on the dog tethering ordinance. We got, we got good direction from council and from our citizens. We took the input that the citizens had given us. And we looked, you know, strongly recommended that we look at the Dallas ordinance, which we did. And we, again, we also took into consideration the citizen input as we developed the proposed amendment that I'll share with you right now. Next slide. So we're talking about an amendment to Article 9-1, specifically Section 9-1-3. That is the animal at large restraint. That's always been in the ordinance, but we are adding an amendment to it. Next slide. So our proposal, so A is just, and these are not the legal words I put up here. These are the layman's terms. I do have slides with the actual legalese on them that we can go to if you'd like. A, it's always been unlawful for an animal to run at large in the city regardless of its emotional state. Our amendment starts with B. And it would make it unlawful for an animal to be tethered unless the tether is attached to in a manner that causes injury or could cause entanglement. The collar or the harness must be properly fitted. And the tether must be connected to the tether, or I'm sorry, to the harness or the collar. So if the animal is tethered, it has to meet those three criteria. Next slide. C, no animal shall be tethered, and this was much discussed, which number one is, while unattended by the owner or another person. So if someone tethers their animal under this proposal, they need to be present with the animal. There is that one exception that we talked about in the event that there is necessary work or temporary work that requires the dog to be tethered. We took input from a citizen and they suggested no more than one hour in a 24-hour period. And so we have put that in the proposal as well. I also want to add, when I talk about tethering in this proposal, that's tethering whether it's on a trolley line or a fixed tether. So this covers everything. And then the extreme weather conditions, which were part of the state law, which was when temperatures go below 32 degrees, if it's too hot, or if there's a tornado warning, something like that, extreme weather conditions. You cannot tether your animal in those conditions. That is the gist of the proposal that would add to 9-1-3. I think my next slide says questions. I'd be more than happy to answer anything that we could answer.
Thank you, Chief. Questions? Councilmember John?
Thank you, Mayor. Can I, can you go back to the slide to where it talks about the running at large and restraint? I just wanted to make sure I did see. Okay, so you meant that does not cause, correct, on number one, right? Just confirming.
You talk about letter B, one?
B1, right.
Yeah, you can't put a tether on an animal if it's gonna cause injury or it could cause entanglement under this proposal.
I think I'm reading it.
Yeah, I think the word unless on this screen makes it sound like one, two, and three are okay.
And I'm just clarifying because the proposed ordinance is different, so just making sure.
Yep, I agree.
I don't.
Mayor?
It's unlawful to tether the animal. So if you tether the animal in any manner other than these three, I think that's where the unless comes in.
Look at the definition.
Okay, yeah. And it is Mr. Hager's fault. Those double negatives make us problematic. I see what you're saying, though. Councilmember Mace?
Thank you. The text of the ordinance that the city attorney proposed uses the word prevents. And so it's just the way it's written on the PowerPoint here.
I just wanted to clarify that. But the other question I had was Mr. Hager.
Go ahead.
If I may continue. I think last time we talked about if there's any violation, possibility of maybe an instructional program, instead of just going directly to fine, was that also taken into consideration? Because all I see is it is a fine for conviction? Or is that something, an option that prosecutor has?
That's something that you could require the municipal court judge to do. But I've left, generally, left that up to the municipal court judge to determine whether, what the appropriate punishment is. But we could obviously write something in the ordinance to require some kind of mandatory instruction or training. The problem is, whatever you're writing, you gotta make sure that those programs are available. And over time, the ordinance becomes, as it ages, there may be other like. You know, it's like sending someone to defensive driving, which has become a euphemism now. It's called driving school and that kind of thing. But that's up to y'all. I didn't feel that that was up to me. That's up to y'all. So I did not add that in there because there was not a consensus of the council based on the notes that I had taken to add that as a possible penalty. But I'll be happy to add it if that's what the council would like for me to do.
And to clarify, Chief, we don't have such a program in place at this time. Is that correct?
I don't know.
Mayor Pro Tem Hill?
All right. Chief Barton had a couple of questions for you and then a bunch of stuff for Mr. Hager. So where are the acceptable hours stated for tethering?
There isn't any.
So you can do it at 3:00 in the morning? If you're up?
You can do it whenever you tell me you want it done, but it was not up to me to make that decision. And there was no consensus that there were hours to permit or not permit tethering. So when we wrote this, we wrote what a minimum was based on the consensus of the comments. So I want you guys to know that this didn't need to be final. We just, Chief Barton and I took y'all's comments based on the input from the citizens and come out with what you see before you. If you need to add or subtract or anything, please do.
Got you. Okay, and then you saw today that I sent a bunch of comments. I don't know if you got a copy of that, but.
I do, and I've read them.
How do we procedurally, if we wanted to propose to change it according to those items that were added?
Why don't, will you humor me and let me bring them up?
Absolutely.
Okay, so Councilmember Hill has the Hill amendments that he's proposed.
And let me preface that by, I've gotten feedback from a lot of people who have approached me on this issue. And rather than being just inundated by information, I ask them to, you know, give me their thoughts. And, you know, there was some, I thought, very good input. So I tried to distill it. And that's what I sent to Mr. Hager and to the mayor and to.
And why don't I start with the first thing? In the caption, you had circled or indicated $500. And so why don't we take up that issue as the penalty? You had circled it, Mayor Pro Tem, so I assume that you wanted to draw attention to that, that you thought it was too high, not high enough?
Well, written out, it said $250.
Okay.
But then in parentheses, it said 500. So it.
I would assume it's 500 because that's all of our standard fines.
Okay.
So we're good with that. And that's the maximum that the court could allow. If you go to 9-1-3, it says about running at large, it should be unlawful for the owner of an animal. And it was proposed to put dog or other animal.
And that was just to be consistent with all your other language throughout the document? Always being a dog or another animal.
And that's fine. I, I don't think that that really changes anything, but I think it's more precise, so. Uh, the next comment was under B two, under nine dash one dash three. There was a comment that they didn't want a pinch, prong, or choke type collar or harness. And that the, the fitted harnesses or collars should be made out of leather, nylon, and fabric, thereby excluding metal chains or metal leashes or, uh, metal restraints, correct?
Yes, exactly.
Can I ask?
I would propose to put, to take tethering device and tethering and take out and make sure that both of those excluded any kind of metal and were only made of leather, nylon, or fabric, and then move it from there into the definition, if that's okay.
That makes sense to me, but go ahead.
I have a question.
Yes.
So if you have a dog on a leash and you're going for a walk and you have a metal choker collar that is illegal in the city of Capel?
Yep.
I.
Is that tethering or is that walking? Is that?
That's why I'm asking the question.
Tethering means in the restraining an animal by the use of a, of a device. So when you're walking your dog, the dog's tethered. The question is, can I tether the, can I then take that tether and then tie it to a inanimate object? And thereby restrain the, the animal by the length of the, of the restraint? Now, I, I can define leash as well, and a leash is one that's held by a human, uh, that restrains a dog. So that we make a distinction between le- leash and tethering, but I'm, I'm trying not to make this too complicated, but tethering by the definition I've put in the ordinance includes walking your dog.
So I have a problem with that.
Yeah.
It's, it's only unlawful if it's unintended.
It's only what?
It's only unlawful if you're unintended. It's okay to tether your d- dog. You can't tether your dog while you're unintended, so if you're walking your dog, the dog's technically tethered. Okay? Right? It's restrained. I mean, the words can mean what you want them to mean.
Okay, so.
We can make a distinction between.
So if, if I am holding my dog's chain.
The key.
Yeah, if I'm holding the, the, um, leash, I can use a choker chain. I can use a metal collar.
Uh, well, that's up to debate. I would, I, there's animal rights people that think any kind of metal re- restraint of an animal is cruel.
Well, there's animal rights people who think I don't deserve a dog because I will leave the dog in the backyard by himself for more than twenty minutes. So I have a problem with that part of it. So we either need to define that differently.
So it's okay.
This is a, this is a group effort, but huh?
A leash can include a metal chain restraint. Is that what I'm hearing?
You what?
Yes, I think you need to differentiate between a leash and tethering.
Okay, I can, no problem, I can do that.
And then the leash, you wouldn't go into what?
So you can have a leash restraint that can be of a, uh, composed of metal, uh, elements? Chain?
Yeah.
Okay.
Bob, this ordinance can't, uh, supersede state law, right?
We can be stricter than state law.
But I mean, the state law already says you can't use pinch, prong, or choke type collars.
Right. So it's redundant if we put it in the ordinance. Then that way, it's like a speeding violation, Chief, where you could write an ordinance violation or you could write a state law violation.
Right.
So Mayor Protem, these were your comments. The state law already prohibits a pinch, prong, choke, uh, collar or harness. You want to also put it in the ordinance?
Yes, that would be my preference because I don't think you should rely on two separate statutes. That's my opinion.
Okay, and then you had another comment, uh, Mayor Protem, under B three, that the tethering device is attached to the dog or animal's harness or collar and not directly to the dog or the animal's neck. Or you said any other body part. What if we just?
Like.
I'm not a dog owner, but I would say it had to be connected to the harness or collar, period. And then that's what it has to be hooked to, so if it's hooked to anything else, then it's a violation. Would you agree, Chief?
Yes.
So can I, so I'll make that change. That accomplishes your goal in your.
Yeah, I'm with you on that.
Okay.
Um, I need, if, if anybody else is having issue with the changes, please speak up.
Please, 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 please. Uh, the fourth comment, uh, was that the tethering is in compliance with paragraph C. I think it, I added the words, it should be unlawful in, in B as provided in this section, so that means anytime you tether, you have to, it accomplishes the same thing, Mayor Protem, but it's just taking extra words out.
Got you.
Bob, you are having a private conversation with, um, Mayor Protem, which I think is awesome.
Comments, so I'm just making sure that I'm, uh, saying them correctly and how I propose. If anyone's got a problem with them, Mayor, please tell me that.
Well, we need, we need to talk about each one of them. We can't just jump from one to the next unless you want to do it all at the end.
No, I'm, I'm good. Yeah.
Because nobody here has a copy of what you, you two are looking at.
No one else does?
Well, and that was, that's why I sent it to, to the mayor and to you, because I didn't want to get a, a rolling quorum or anything going. I didn't know how it needed to be distributed.
Um, if I send this to.
Send it to the city manager and have he or she distribute it.
I did that, too.
Okay. I, I thought everybody had what we were talking about.
Yeah, so I, that's, that may be my fault because I didn't know the, the procedure on that other than sending it to other people that weren't on the council.
What did I just do?
Leave it up to you guys to do whatever is necessary.
I'll just say, Mayor Protem, I appreciate that, and I think we're probably aligned with a lot of the same comments. And sorry, Mayor, I'm just being, a lot of the comments that you have, I think what's hard is like, I'm a visual person, so not being able to see it, and then there's conversation. And I think that that's where we're getting lost in the translation, so.
Can I share my screen? Would that be legal?
Yeah, let's do that.
Well, we're all together, but, um, I just sent it to Ashley and Ashley's gonna send it to everybody.
Okay.
Mayor?
Yes?
I, I think the right thing to do is actually have a copy ourselves and have enough time to look at it, evaluate it, and have, be able to, you know, comment the next time.
Mayor, I support that suggestion.
Me, too.
And I agree, there's no rush, um, you know, as long as everybody has it, we can, we can table it or do, and whatever you guys want to do.
Yeah, I, I motion to table it.
If, if everybody is comfortable with that?
Yeah.
Um, all in favor?
Procedurally, I'll be glad.
Do you, do you want us to, do you want us to move to table?
We just did.
Oh, sorry.
We had a motion from, um, I'm sorry, Councilmember Matthew and a second by Councilmember Roden to table.
To the next meeting?
Well, we did not specifically say date certain, but we said, uh, table.
Okay.
So do we want to, um?
Do you want me to repeat or?
Do we want?
Okay.
Mayor, if I, if I might suggest, we need to get, assuming that everyone gets a copy of the ordinance with Mayor Protem's comments. And then everyone's gonna comment on that or make changes. Where are the changes gonna go and who's going to collect them? And how are they gonna get to the chief and I so we can write them up and present them to you?
Hold on one second. Um.
That doesn't have to be in the motion, but for process purposes.
For process purposes, um, probably the best way to do it is to have everything go to Ashley. And then Ashley will forward the information to Chief Barton and Bob Hager. And then whatever that, that is will come back to all of us before the next meeting.
Okay, and then once we do that, would, I, I would recommend that we put this on a work session and get these things.
Well, we, we have a fifth Tuesday coming up.
And so that we're not.
That would be a great fifth Tuesday item.
The action portion of the meeting.
Okay.
That's the suggestion.
Okay.
We'll do whatever you want.
I don't know if, if you heard me, but we're gonna work on it on fifth Tuesday.
Okay, thank you. I, I did not. I apologize.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, and then we have process. And then we will put this on the agenda on the fifth Tuesday. And then he's, did he interrupt us with all in favor? All in favor?
Longhand as a Smith, Mays, Roden, John, Matthew Hill, in favor, nonopposed, motion carries.
Hey, that was a messy one. The next one is, um, item fourteen, city manager's report, um, project updates and future agendas. And if anybody noticed, um, Mr. Land looks different tonight. We have, uh, Tracy Leach sitting in, uh, for Mr. Land, and we appreciate you being here.
Thank you, Mayor. My pleasure to be here. Um, I am pleased to provide the council with an update on our activities related to the governor's latest executive order, uh, which was issued on March second. So GA thirty-four, which will be effective tomorrow, March tenth, essentially allows businesses and other establishments to be at one hundred percent pre-COVID operational levels, but does not require that any entity do so. So it eliminates the seventy-five, what we were currently operating under, which was the seventy-five percent, uh, capacity restrictions. It rescinds the statewide mask mandate. Um, and it continues to supersede any conflicting local orders. Um, I'm really proud of the work that our teams have done over this, this past week to work through the logistics of, uh, what the latest order means um, and how we can open with the safety of our employees, residents, and customers as our primary focus and our first responsibility. We will be requiring employees to follow CDC guidelines by wearing masks whenever they are outside of their offices and interacting with customers, so it will be really easy to identify. So if you look around this room, you know exactly who the staff is because we're all, we'll all be wearing our masks. We'll be maintaining social distancing and frequent hand washing and sanitizing. Uh, we have installed safety improvements throughout various city facilities such as Plexiglas dividers, floor markers, and enhanced cleaning procedures. Um, and in addition to that, we have also, um, we are also adding UV light systems to the HVAC sys- HVAC system here at Town Center. Uh, that technology has developed to the point of being effective at neutralizing airborne bacteria and viruses in systems like the one that has been installed in this facility. Uh, our contractor has begun work and expects to be finished by the end of the month. There should be very minimal disruption. We're gonna do that work early in the morning when the, the building's cool. So it's really not going to be noticed. Uh, we plan to begin similar installation of this same, uh, system over at the service center in the coming weeks. Other facilities have been evaluated but are not candidates for this specific system due to the HVAC design, but we're gonna continue to monitor for technology um, improvements that we might be able to, um, retrofit some additional facilities as technology evolves. Um, we are working our way back to pre-COVID service levels and hours for many of our facilities, our front-facing facilities. Um, knowing that we will be continuing with COVID safety me- measures such as our staff rotations to ensure continuity of operations. Uh, there will be some instances where the hours and/or the service levels, uh, will be expanded from what we're currently offering but won't be quite at the same level as they were when we were pre-COVID. Um, and additionally, there are some facilities where we'll need to reengage and schedule our part-time staff that, uh, we haven't needed. Uh, so that we can fully prepare for expanding our hours of operation. Um, and what we've learned throughout this whole experience with COVID is, um, a lot of the services, um, so even when the doors were closed to walk-in traffic, um, we have continued to operate every day, um, since we, since COVID hit, uh, this, this time last year. And so all of our online services will continue to be offered to residents who do not feel comfortable coming into the facilities. Um, we will still be operating, so from the perspective of what is, what does this mean for all of us at the, the DIES here as we continue to conduct business for, um, council meetings? We will continue, um, starting with the, the upcoming council meeting and our upcoming planning and zoning meetings. Uh, we will continue, um, hybrid, um, meetings, which the governor had extended the thirty day, for another thirty days, um, to allow us to have the virtual meetings for the quorums. Uh, what we will, what will be different is we will, um, open the facility for in-person attendance for the council meetings. Uh, we will manage the, manage the crowd, the hordes of people that will be coming in to attend the meeting. Uh, similar to what you have probably seen for many of the sporting, uh, venues where we'll have kind of the closest seats, rows blocked off. And then we'll have like every other row blocked off. We'll have specific seats where folks can sit, uh, so that we can maintain the social distancing here within this facility. All of our updated, um, facility hours and services and how you can access all of our services, those are currently updated on our, um, city website, so capeltx.gov. There is a COVID nineteen page that we have kind of fleshed out. There's actually several pages there. And so the facility hours and services has been updated, so everybody can go to the website and find out what is, um, changed. I do want to hit just a couple of the highlights, um. So the core, starting on April fifth, um, for everybody, there is no more excuses for not going to work out because they have expanded those early morning hours. So they will be opening at five AM, um, Monday through Friday. So no excuses for, uh, the core. Um, our Capel Senior and Community Center, so this is a really big deal for us. It has been literally closed. Nothing has been occurring over there in person, so they've been doing a lot of virtual, um, programming and activities and outreach with the, um, members over there, but there literally has been nothing in person. Um, and that's going to change, um, April nineteenth. So on the April nineteenth, we will open the doors to that facility for individuals who would like to come in and have, um, get a new membership or to register for, um, classes. What has happened is because we've been closed for a year, um, essentially almost every membership has expired, and so we are going to, um, automatically renew everybody's membership for free. And everybody will be current through December thirty-first of this current year. It's all free. Um, we will actually open the doors for programming to the members on May third. So Monday through Friday, weekdays, nine AM to five PM. The fitness center, the classes, everybody can go to the senior center, and that's a, that's a big deal, so, uh, we are excited about that. We're also excited, May third. Also, we will begin to accept rental applications for that facility. The Cosby Library and Community Commons, beginning on March eighth, so this was actually yesterday, so they, they. The Cosby Library and Community Commons, beginning on March 8th, so this was actually yesterday, so they, they were excited about it. They have expanded their hours of operation, and they have also eliminated all of the requirements to pre-register for set times to come in. And so you do not need appointments to go visit the library and browse the books, and you can go do what you need to do there. Many of the rooms that are around the perimeter of where all the books are, those will continue to stay closed as we are still on our team rotations to be able to do the appropriate cleaning and that sort of thing. Those will remain closed, but we are working towards a reopening of those facilities as well. The rest of what we've got next door at 265 for all of our engineering, building permits, code enforcement, all of that engineering, that facility will be open to walk-in traffic for folks who would like to meet with our staff members there. We will continue to ask folks to come in and we can make an appointment and kind of schedule folks if we want to do in-person. We will also be offering, obviously, the virtual meetings if that is a preference for those individuals that are requesting a meeting. And the rest of those facilities, I'm gonna, I'm gonna leave for, I know we have put all of that information out on our social media. We had a press release. It is on our website. So it is a number of places. I encourage everybody to go visit that site so you can find out if all of the facilities that you want to visit are gonna be open. That concludes my report, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you very much. There's a lot going on. And I know the senior center will be very pleased, very pleased. Any questions for Ms. Leach? None? Okay. The next item is the mayor and council reports. Couple of the upcoming events, on March 13th, that's Saturday, the Capel Arts Center, the Selkie Girls will be performing live in a socially-distanced main hall. Originally, they were formed in 2013. The Selkie Girls have firmly established themselves as a mainstay in the North Texas folk music scene. Dozens of music and art festivals under their belt, as well as numerous television appearances. The band has toured throughout the states, never failing to captivate their audiences with their unique instrumentation, lush harmonies, and dynamic arrangements. So if you are interested in this, capelartcenter.org for details. The last date to register to vote for the May 1st election is April 1st. Early voting begins April 19th through the 27th. Early voting by personal appearance is available for all residents at Capel Town Center. Capel residents who live in Denton County can vote anywhere in Denton County during early voting. On May 1st, which is Election Day, Dallas County residents can vote at Town's, Capel Town Center. Denton County residents will vote at Victorious Life Church, which is at 2671 MacArthur Boulevard, Louisville, 75067. This information and any other information that you need regarding the election is available on the city secretary's election page, which is capeltx.gov backslash election. Are there any other announcements the council has for events or community interest? Hearing none. There is an item that is necessary, for item 17, Necessary Action for, from Executive Session. Mr. Hager, could you read?
Yes, Mayor and Council, thank you. As a result of our executive session tonight, I would ask the council to consider the following motion. Motion to Accept the Offer Letter and Approve Conveying a 50-Foot Utility Easement Along Beltline Road to Atmos Energy Corporation for Gas Line Purposes Under the Terms and Conditions of a Pipeline Easement, which is attached as Exhibit A, for the amount of $358,881, and to authorize the mayor to sign the conveyance documents upon the payment by Atmos.
Thank you. I will consider a motion. Councilmember Mace.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve. The motion is read into the record by the city attorney.
Thank you. Is there a second? Councilmember Roden? All in favor?
Long, Kenasa Smith, Mace Roden, John Matthew Hill, in favor, none opposed, the motion carries.
Much. There is no business left for us, so the time is 10:20, and we are adjourned. Thank you.